For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, rules of order. City council meetings are conducted according to Robert's Rules of Order unless otherwise provided for and adopted by the city council at their annual organizational meeting in November. Number four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meeting, April 21st, 2025, regular meeting.
A second?
All right, first we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Just abstaining because I wasn't there.
Okay.
Could I make a suggestion before we go too far, Tammy?
Yes, sir.
I don't know how the council feels, but I'm not pleased with the position of 26 for the budget vote. And I'm wondering if we could move 26 ahead and create a 12A. And the reason for that is, I don't think it's fair to the citizens to deal with that after an executive session. That's a lot of money to talk about. It's 27 million bucks. And I would like to talk about it when there's more people here.
So the reason it's on the agenda like that is because we have the union contract that we need to approve, which has been built into the budget. So unless we take, like, everything out of order, I think that's the issue. Because you built the numbers from that union contract into the budget. So if that doesn't pass...
Okay, well, if that's the case, can we push that into a special meeting? I just hate doing it after an executive session when Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth can't see this happen.
The, um, I don't know, Tammy, if this would be amenable, but I'd be okay if we wanted to pull it up for discussion and then we wait for a vote, so that the public doesn't have to wait, to your point, to the very end. And then, but we don't vote on it as a council until the end. I don't know if that's a...
Like, hold a public hearing?
Yeah, hold a public hearing, talk about the budget, and then do the executive session so that you can talk about the union negotiation, which is actually the budget. You would have to say yes or no, or the council, if they didn't like where we landed there, could change it. But at least, to your point, Steve, we're not holding it until the very end.
After an executive session. It just seems, you know, the union is part of it, I get it. I just hate, I hate the position. And maybe the rest of the council doesn't mind, I don't know. But I hate to, I hate to make that the last thing of the night. Any other comments about that?
If the executive session turn up numbers that are a pretty big increase or decrease, though, then the vote might be on something different than what we discussed in public hearing. I'm sure it wouldn't be very much different, but...
Yeah, it's not, definitely not the budget, but the thing is, that was the point is to, yeah, we couldn't necessarily vote, and then the executive session, and then you'd say, "I didn't like this, what you all put in here and negotiated." It wouldn't be a huge amount, we would have to change it. So, but I think, Tammy, if you're okay having discussion and public hearing on it, at least to your point, Steve, and we just hold the vote on the final portion of it until after the executive session, so the council can weigh in, and if they are okay with what's in the contract.
You know, maybe it's just me. Maybe the public doesn't care that we're doing it after an executive session, but a $27 million ask is something everybody should be aware of.
I agree with that.
Someone else have any thoughts? So, do we need a, we must need a vote to add something? Or do we just hold the public hearing?
Yeah, not to, I apologize for the public. We could, if you wanted, just do the executive session. We can all go to my office, and then come back, discuss the negotiation, and you can both. That looks strange. All right, that's Stephen like that.
Yeah, I don't like that. Maybe we just need to leave it alone. I, I just, I didn't like the position.
Yeah, is everyone in favor of having a 12A public hearing portion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
At least we could talk about it before.
Yeah.
I thought that was our incentive to move quickly through the public hearing.
That's right.
We still can't.
Don't let me forget, I'll start going on this and then...
Well, thank you.
Sure. All right, presentation of awards. First thing is Pride Month proclamation. I'll read this. "Whereas the city of Ellsworth strives to be a community that is welcoming and supportive of its, all its members, and whereas across the nation, June has been declared Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots and the subsequent work toward achieving equal justice and equal opportunity for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ+ Americans, and whereas all LGBTQ+ individuals should be able to live their lives with dignity, respect, and free from the fear of harassment, whereas the city of Ellsworth is committed to ensuring that all residents and visitors in our community are treated with dignity and respect regardless of race, gender, age, sexual orientation, or gender identity and expression, and whereas Ellsworth supports the legal nondiscrimination protections for LGBTQ+ manners made into law in 2005, and whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to recognize and support the Ellsworth LGBTQ+ community and acknowledge the ongoing work of the citizens of Ellsworth and advocate for equal rights and acceptance of all eight people regardless of race, gender, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression, and whereas June Pride Month is an occasion to recognize that when some individuals are denied the promise of equality, then all citizens are effective. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Ellsworth remain, El, city of Ellsworth Maine does hereby proclaim the month of June as Pride Month, and the city of Ellsworth urges all members of our community to advocate for equality and to work together to advance the principles of equal rights, justice, and opportunity for all their fellow citizens. Signed, this 19th day of June, May 2025." Okay, next presentation award is Deputy Chief Sean Willie. Commendation award is Chief Pierce here.
Hello, Chief Pierce, Ellsworth Police Department. So, sorry, guys, here tonight. We had a back in last December. You guys probably read about it, where they essentially saved the lives of some 12-year-olds that had gotten out on the ice from Kids' Peace. So we just want to recognize that. So I'll just go over a little bit about the incident first. So on Sunday, December 15th, at approximately 11:50 a.m., Ellsworth Fire Department responded to Kids' Peace for the report of a fire activation alarm. At approximately 12:30, staff at Kids' Peace called to report four juvenile residents had run out, away from the facility, and were missing. Sergeant Wilmot began searching the North Street area, observed one of the juveniles on the ice at Grand Lake. Sergeant Wilmot stopped and approached her, rode back to his vehicle, and determined that there are other missing juveniles were on the ice and that one had fallen through. Sergeant Wilmot then notified other first responders, a warden plane, they checked the area and located the other juveniles on the ice. Sergeant Wilmot made his way through the partially frozen bog part of the lake, met up with Corporal Angelo and Warden Rudolph. The second juvenile approached Warden Rudolph and Corporal Merchant, and they were brought back through the bog, back to receive medical attention. Last two juveniles were still on the ice, the main part of the lake, Corporal Angelo, Warden Rudolph determined that it was too unstable to cross. Officer Skinner, Ellsworth firefighters obtained two canoes from local landowners and allowed them to use to access the lake. Officer Skinner and the officers stood by at the edge of the ice while the four firefighters pulled the last two juveniles out of the ice with the canoes. Officers, the fallen officers, Deputy Chief Sean Willie, Sergeant Wilmot, Sergeant Moat, Corporal Angelo, Corporal Merchant, Officer Skinner, and Warden Rudolph pulled the canoes back to shore with the juveniles, where one of them had to be removed from the ice, from the water, and were transferred to EMS for medical attention. So our first responders that day worked together to essentially save the life of two of these young 12-year-olds from Kids' Peace. Through our policy, our, we're gonna give them award, a commendation award, which is defined as an award to an officer for meritorious action above and beyond the call of duty. The award may be presented for exemplatory action in the line of duty under unusual, difficult, or dangerous conditions, when because of the officer's action, a serious crime, or serious injury, or death is averted. This definition further states the award must involve unusual determination, valor, initiative, skill, selflessness, or professionalism, which I think defines everything that these guys did that night. So if I could have Deputy Chief Willie, Sergeant Wilmot, Sergeant Moat, Corporal Angelo, Corporal Merchant, and Officer Skinner come up front. Warden Rudolph is currently at home, so he wouldn't, he couldn't be here tonight. But congratulations and...
Is Gamble...
No, he's still sick.
The next item for presentation award is for MMA's seventh grade essay contest winners. Just a little bit of background on that. During the 2024-25 school year, the Maine Municipal Association promoted a statewide essay contest for seventh grade students. The contest is designed to help students learn more about the importance of municipalities and inspire them to become our next generation of local leaders. The essay contest is part of the citizen education program, which is designed to encourage citizens of all ages to consider getting involved in their local government. Students were asked to submit essays with the theme "If I Led My Community." From there, students could write about what they would do in a local leadership capacity. Essays were judged on students demonstrating an understanding of municipal government, quality of writing, and originality by a panel of five pulled from MMA staff. Three winners were chosen, two from Ellsworth Elementary Middle School. And we have Principal Clifford here.
Hi, I'm April Clifford. I'm the principal at the Ellsworth Elementary Middle School. We would like to have each student come up and read their essay. It'll take just a few minutes. So I'm gonna have our second place winner, Caleb Dianato, come up and read his essay.
Hi, I'm Caleb Dianato from Ellsworth Elementary Middle School. I think my community needs more bike paths, a bike program for kids, a bike bridge to the school, and bike lanes on the bridges and roads for safe riding. We also need upgraded equipment for the park to make exercise for kids more accessible. For our paths, we need more sidewalks, dog parks, put back stations, and stick libraries around town for our community. I recommend increasing the number of bike paths on main streets because it helps people stay healthy, get more exercise, improve sleep, and reduces stress. Also, bike paths are a great way to reduce popu, oh, pollution and become a greener community. Working with city planners to make this happen would be important. A bike program for young kids will help kids get more exercise before school, which could improve concentration in school. Better access to biking will also help the environment by reducing exhaust in the air around the school and in our town. A bike brace, or biking lanes can help reduce bike-related accidents. Every year, there are 150,000 accidents involving bikes. So, a bike bridge and more biking paths, like in bigger communities, might keep people safe while biking. Bike lanes can make it easier for people to bike to work, school, and parks, which will help the environment. I feel we can work with the city and state to use a portion of property taxes or car registration fees to build more bike lanes and paths. Our town is very spread out and not kid-friendly. I feel improving the playground equipment and adding more equipment could lead to more active families and children. New age-appropriate playground equipment will help kids get more exercise and fun. When I usually go to the park, I get bored quickly because there is not a lot of equipment or activities for my age. Stick libraries, which is a cost-free addition to our town, can make happier dogs and pet owners. Plus, adding put-back stations, like in Bar Harbor, is a great way to keep the town clean. Most people don't clean up after their pets if they don't have put-backs, so this will help. Working with the recreation department or obtaining grants could make this a great addiction. Dog parks are a good idea for exercise. Dogs want to play with their owners, and their owners with them. This gives to both the dog and the owner a lot of exercise. Using existing land the city owns to develop a walking path in the dog park could be a great way to exercise both dogs and owners. There are many ways to fund these ideas. There are multiple grants available through the state. Working with town councils and the recreation department to provide funding for these ideas could also be helpful. There are also fundraisers that can be done at the city level that could provide funding for matching grant opportunities with private or public grant organizations.
Thank you. Can we just keep on looking for just a moment?
You want to do both at the same time, or separate?
We'll do them both at the same time.
All right, I'm gonna introduce our first place essay winner is Cory Mishu Kitter.
If I led my community, my biggest goal would be to help as many people as possible. A strong community is built on kindness when actioned. And if we all work together, we can make a real difference in people's lives. However, I can't do this alone. I need help of everybody in our community to create real change. One of the most important things I would focus on is helping the homeless. No one should go to sleep on the streets or go to bed hungry. I would work to make sure that people experience homelessness and have access to food, clean water, and shelter, especially during the cold months. Too of, too often, we see people struggling while some individuals try to help. We need a bigger organized effort. I would work with local businesses, churches, volunteers to set food traps, collect warm clothes, and create a safe shelter for needy people. However, helping the homeless is just one part of making our community a better place. Another big issue is, I've noticed, is tra, traffic safety. I've seen way too many cars speed down the road where kids play, walk, and families slip. There are sometimes when drivers go 40, 50, or even 60 miles per hour in an area that can only go 60 miles per hour, 25. That is dangerous. And we need to do something about it. If I were to change, if I was in charge, I would push for a better enforcement of speed limit. I would ask the police to be more active in sporting, stopping, reckless driving, and keeping our streets safe. Speeding may not seem like a big deal to some, but it only takes one mistake to cause a tragic accident. Just beyond just stopping crimes and helping the homeless, I believe a strong community is one where one people support each other in all aspects of life. I would love to see more programs for young people to keep them engaged and on the right path. Schools should have better resources, after-school activities, and mentorship programs to help kids reach their full potential. I would want to create space where young people feel safe and have opportunities to grow, learn, and succeed, whether it's sports, whether it's sports, music, arts, or academic, academic clubs. We need more activities that give kids potential ways to spend their time. Additionally, I would encourage communities to clean up and keep our neighborhoods looking nice and welcoming. When our streets are clean and well-maintained, people feel more pride in where they live. If we all pitched in, we could keep parks, sidewalks, and public spaces free from litter and make our community a better place. We are proud to call home. Leading a community is more about than just making rules. It's about listening to people, understanding their struggles, and working together to find a solution. I may not have all the answers, but with help of everybody in our community, I wouldn't, I know we could make a real difference, lasting impact. Together, we can create a place where everybody feels safe, supported, and valued.
So we're just gonna read this. We have the City of Ellsworth proudly presents educational achievement award to Cory Mishu Kitter. Congratulations on achieving first place in Maine Municipal Association Annual Seventh Grade Essay Contest. And with that, MMA also provided a $250 Visa gift card for him. And then, City of Ellsworth proudly presents this educational achievement award to Caleb Dianato. Congratulations on achieving second place in Maine Municipal Association's Annual Seventh Grade Essay Contest. And again, there's a $250 Visa gift card.
What's the minimum age for running for council?
Want to sit in the chair?
I want you guys to sit in those chairs so I can get your picture.
Just happened to have to, right there. Mics are on, just so you know.
I just sign here?
All right, you're welcome. Congratulations.
$250 should cover the cost of one of those chairs. Just saying. It's an option for you.
Yeah, go. It's gonna be a long meeting.
These chairs are pretty comfy and they're pretty fun.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome. All right. Number six on the agenda is the city manager's report. Manager Pierce?
Thank you. First of all, big thanks to Cory and Caleb there. You know, it was the second time I had the honor of hearing that. They also spoke at the school board, and I think we've got a couple things in the budget that touch on those, both in our general assistance folks. And I probably want to hook them up with Tina, who I know would love to hear their, and then obviously I know there's some counselors here that have a dog park near, near their heart. It's just...
And, and bike.
And the bike.
Bike safety, yeah.
And trails, and, you know, it's, I'd have to say, it touches the heart when, you know, a lot of times you hear a lot of me, me, me things, and they're just such like a we, we, us, us. You know, I was a rhetoric major in undergrad, and so two of my favorite things, just really excellent persuasive white writing, and to see how good of a job our school does. And then civic engagement, civic pride, just the best of Ellsworth. And really glad to hear, hear, hear those two speeches tonight. Switching gears, the High Street paving, to areas I know, you know, has caused some frustration in the community. I did just want to note that we're working, our teams are working really hard to work with the state and the Northeast Paving, who's the contractor on this piece. There's, you know, there's been, of course, in the community, it's hard to know who's paving what. We did $1.6 million in road paving this spring, about 20 projects, except for four of them. Those are all completed. The High Street project is not one of the city's projects. That being said, you know, our, our teams are attending their weekly planning meetings, just to give folks, I know a lot of folks are like, "What's going on? What's happening here?" You know, there's, originally this was, this was scheduled for last year, and then they, the contractor couldn't quite make it in that timeframe, so they scheduled it in the spring. It's night work happening from 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., but obviously it affects some of the daytime operations. When they lowered the manholes and the water boxes, and kind of going to state DOT standards with the grinding, really kind of resulted in some, some sagging cold patch formation, and the formation of potholes. They sort of milled all the way really through the pavement to exposing the gravel base in some areas. So our team has kind of been working on an emergency basis to fill potholes as much as possible. And, and also the weather hasn't been cooperating, as you can imagine. It's been an extraordinarily wet spring when you're opening up a road, you know, changing the water pieces, the manhole covers, et cetera. And the temperatures, too. The main DOT has specs on if it's below 50 degrees the previous evening, they can't necessarily do the paving. So they are, the contractor is preparing to do kind of an emergency shim to basically get it to the level that it was at this winter. So hopefully, that will be happening soon. At the, that kind of, the paving work for the shimming at the end of May, first week in June, to kind of get it back to a maintenance level. And then that works continue at night, really through, I think the mobilization schedule has them through September. So it's gonna be all, that doesn't mean, you know, there's not gonna be any paving, or things aren't gonna be improving throughout the entire summer. But, you know, our teams are trying to work as best we can with the state on, on those projects to, to make it as seamless, knowing that it's, it's gonna be a difficult going. And I'm really looking forward to October, when the roads are in much better shape this year. So, the recreational cannabis workshop we have on May 29th at 6:00 p.m. after the voters passed that 55 to 45, I believe, last fall. So we're having the, we've already had, I think, four workshops prior to the vote on that. So this one's gonna be to discuss the regulatory framework for that potential process and get the council's guidance and some community feedback on how many, where, what the process should be, the regulatory framework. So a lot more to discuss on May 29th. A quick note on, I know we're voting on this municipal side of the budget, but the school side of the budget is being voted on, on June 10th. Absentee ballots are available starting now in City Hall, but the June, Tuesday, June 10th is the actual election date. And then finally, I've got a fair amount of other things that we'll discuss, actually, in the, the agenda itself. But just a big employee thanks first to Deb and Leia from our budget teams. They are, you know, I think Sarah, who's the deputy city manager, she sits next to them, and whenever I'm in her office, I just hear, "Chick, chick, chick, chick." I mean, it's just flat out all day long, they are processing paperwork. And before I became city manager, one of the things that I'd been hearing is that bills weren't being paid on time. There wasn't, and that crew, how they do it. And you see the size of these warrants compared to, you know, other smaller cities and towns. Like, they really do an incredible job. I haven't heard any of that. You know, let me know if that's the case. But they, especially with Ashley, our deputy finance director, and Nate, our finance director, that really had to put an incredible amount of work into this budget. They really kept things humming along there. It's like NASA Mission Control, and it's just, it's incredible to kind of work near them. And then also to Brittany Merrill, our deputy city planner, who's here tonight. She's been just, you know, doing so much work as we've been, in the process of hiring a new planner, which we hope to have some updates on soon. But, you know, she's been helping me, you know, get the Dice Arts Project over the line. She has got the, today she sent me a docu-sign to kind of finalize the, the land purchase for the, the trails out on Branch Lake, helping on the courthouse project. Advice on the adaptive leadership has been excellent on how we can make format changes. And she's even been leading, like, an art class after hours for employees to really build culture and stuff in City Hall. It's sort of the full package of somebody who's doing an excellent job in their job itself, who's doing an excellent job of kind of managing up to, I feel like, make my job better, and then also just working on culture in the organization. So big, big thanks to Brittany for all the work she's doing. So that's it for the city manager report.
All right. Number seven, committee reports. We do have something on here for the planning board. Number seven, committee reports. We do have something on here for the planning board. Request to appoint Lisa LaRue as an alternate with a term expiring 6/30/2028. And Matthew Utier, Utier, as an alternate with a term expiring 6/30/27. So I guess we just need a motion for, or discussion, if everyone's comfortable, moving forward with those two alternates. They seem very qualified.
Yeah, the memos were helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Resumes.
Good, good. Yes, they both had planned to be here tonight to introduce themselves, but unfortunately, neither of them could make it, so. So would you like Matt to introduce himself?
Sure.
Maybe if you could pronounce your last name.
You had, it was really close. Utier.
Utier, okay.
Hi, Matt Utier, been here in Ellsworth just about a year now. I work for the National Park Service. Sorry, I'm still in uniform. But happy to be here, happy to serve. I'm a civil engineer by, by trade, by education. Licensed in California and Maine, so happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're excited to have a full planning board.
Oh.
Again.
It's heartening to see, to read through the memo and see the process, the interviews, the selection of people who are qualified and experienced. It just signals to future developers that we're here, we're ready, we're consistent. That's what we should be doing. It's great.
Make a motion to approve both nominees for the planning board, board alternate positions.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any other committee reports?
Yes.
Recreation Commission is meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30 in these chambers here. Public is welcome. It's a great time, as I've said before. We welcome ideas. And I'll be talking about the essays we heard from those youngsters as well tonight. They were pretty great. So tomorrow, the Ellsworth Recreation Commission invites families and community members to the Play It Forward. See, I told you we'd come up with a better name. A fun and informative event focused on Nolton Park, held at the park, at Nolton Park, on Saturday, May 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. Play It Forward Day is designed to raise awareness about ongoing playground upgrades and maintenance, highlight the work of the Recreation Commission, and learn more about how they can get involved in supporting playground design and, and projects. There'll also be a variety of hands-on and family-friendly activities, like Touch Truck, where kids can climb aboard a truck and explore a police cruiser, a fire truck, and public work. It sounds like a lot of fun, actually.
Driving them would be really fun.
Use the sirens, I don't know. Playground tours as well. Rec Commission Chair Eric Marichal will lead a guided tour around the current equipment and present the vision and plan timeline for the upgrades. There's gonna be bingo adventure, suggest a feature board, playground committee table. It's, it's gonna be amazing, so. Again, that date was Saturday, May 24th from 9:00 to 11:00 AM.
This Saturday, right? Yes.
That's right. Yep, this is coming Saturday morning. See you there. That's all I got.
Equally exciting, the Cemetery Commission. Held their first meeting last week. There's a lot of plans in the works for how to manage the cemeteries that the city has some prerogative over across the municipality. Elections were held. That was the one solid piece of action in amongst getting to know each other. And again, it was, we introduced ourselves by why we love cemeteries. And if you wanna get to know people, that's a great question, if you're ever like lacking. Dottie Vachon was elected chairperson. Albert Scott, going by Scotty, is the vice chair. And Tiffany Tate is the secretary. The commission will be meeting bi-weekly for the next three weeks in order to really get up and running. And then probably be able, well, then they'll decide if they go to monthly or keep going. But they're that eager to get going with implementing the charge to the commission, so nice news to share tonight.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
It's Maine Arbor Week for the Arbor Commission, well, for the state of Maine. And so tomorrow, the second grade class from the middle school, the Moore School, will be at the Jordan Homestead Nursery planting 80 trees at the nursery. It is my favorite day of the year. The kids get dirty, plant trees, take a walk on the Jordan Homestead Trail. And it's a really great day. That starts tomorrow at 10:00 AM for anyone interested in joining us. And yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay. Moving on. Citizen comments. This is the area on the agenda where citizens may speak on items that are not on the agenda. Request that you come to the podium, state your name, and keep your comments to no longer than three minutes. You may also have the opportunity to speak on agenda items when the item is brought up through the agenda. Anybody? I see you leaning forward. Mr. Workman?
I was waiting for Mr. Odenham to speak. He usually speaks, so. I usually sit there and wait. Hi, my name's Gordon Workman, resident of Ellsworth. I have three items I like to ask about, or state. One, when people come up and have a discussion about open topics with the agendas or citizen comments, I think that citizens should be freely to do that without interruption. I think, you know, people, the citizens, have concerns and they see it more than, than not others. And they should have the right to speak and voice everything they wanna speak about without interruption. I think that's one thing. Secondly, the, there's supposed to be something on the agenda this month. Was brought up in February at the finance meeting about Kerry Carr's taxes. Well, the reallocation of the funds of the sale of his house. Was then brought up in March. That was gonna be put on the agenda tonight. And it's not, so I, that's kinda disappointing it wasn't brought up. So I was wondering why that was. Thirdly was the other issue, the courthouse road project. I know you're gonna talk about engineering and stuff like that tonight. But looking for the alternative funding, I do believe our senator and our representative has gone to the state to try to receive funding for half that project. They're trying to. I didn't know if the city managers tried to work with them to try to get that. That'd be nice to know because it shouldn't all fall on to the citizens of Ellsworth. That money shouldn't be all from us. So it's going to be the Hancock County Judicial Center, which is run by the state. And it shouldn't all fall on the backs of the citizens. It's wonderful that it's up there and we've found a spot for it other than in a residential neighborhood. That's awesome. But I do believe the Hancock County Commissioners should be part of this project. Some of the fees from them should be going towards it. I also think maybe, since it's the Hancock County Courthouse, maybe the towns of Hancock County should be involved with this as well. Because we're basically using just city funding for doing this project. And I don't think it's up to the citizens of Ellsworth to take that on the backs. That's my thoughts on that, so if there's anything I can hear back about Kerry Carr's issue, that'd be nice.
Can you just comment?
Yeah, I, I don't, typically, we don't usually comment back on things, so. If you have something, you're looking like, or if you want to respond via email, that's fine as well.
Yeah, I can follow up with you, Gordon.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I did.
And maybe CC the rest of the council?
And for that, they're just not established. Like, that's, yeah, that's, Robert's rules is the other pieces is, we start doing the back and forth. It's, you know, why, why would I take back, I'd love to talk to Gordon.
All right, well, one other thing. Hopefully, being said, because I do believe he should receive those extra funds back to him. Hopefully, the money's in an account where it's getting interest, so it's at least making money, so he can receive the additional interest off those funds. Just all that up.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else from the public that'd like to speak? No? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on. Councillor Comments. Did I miss something?
No. I was, so I was wondering if this would be an appropriate time to, to answer the question about asking for state funding to help cover the cost of the road, just to say that there, there was a public hearing. And Charlie and I both, I think I did written testimony, you testified?
Yep.
In person. The appropriations table, if, if it passes, it sits on the appropriations table. I'm hearing there's not gonna be much money, if any, that's gonna be divvied up at the end of the session. But the city did participate in that by supporting a bill with both Charlie and, and myself testifying in support.
Thank you.
I've gone to a couple county commissioner meetings over the last year. They're interesting. I find it difficult to get a lot of back and forth with the commissioners. I've let them know about the courthouse project, which I think they probably knew it was happening otherwise. But I've definitely put the word out that it is a county project and we're working on various things that involve the entire county as we are the seat. And maybe in the future, county would like to chip in, or at least be part of that discussion. Hasn't been terribly successful as of yet, but I encourage citizens, especially citizens that have some, you know, some, some clout and are used to and good at going to talk to groups and committees and getting their point across. So I encourage everybody who is interested to flood the commissioners' chambers and tell them your, what's on your mind as well.
Any other councillors?
Are you ready?
I was just waiting for you to.
Okay. I had a different topic that I wanted to talk about tonight. But Mr. Workman brought up an item that's a little bit near and dear to my heart. And on the Kerry Carr's property, if you will, maybe a little background. The, the city foreclosed for a tax foreclosure and sold the property. And the overdue amount was just under $20,000. The city sold it for $150,000. There was a 10% fee to the auctioneer. That brought us down to $135,000. In my mind, I feel the city owes that equity to the family that lost their property. They started out with taxes just under 10, and by the time the lawyer fees and the assessment fees and all of that, it got up to close to 20. And back in February 14th, a finance meeting, I did bring that up. And Charlie and I agreed at that meeting that, there was two subjects brought up at that meeting. One meeting was, I'm sorry, one subject was about panhandling, people begging in the streets. And the second subject was the equity theft, is what it's called.
Steve, you can't call it theft.
I'm speaking.
That's absurd.
Well, that's what it says online. When you do some research, it's called equity theft.
You can find all kinds of things online.
So, and it's, I thought it was my turn to talk.
Go ahead.
So anyway, we, we've got a family here that lost their home. And, and, you know, this council has to agree to act on this. But in my mind, I feel that we owe them their equity. And in my mind, I feel that that's equity theft. And on the February 14th, Charlie, you and I agreed that on the April agenda, we would have the panhandling discussion, which we did. And we agreed that we would have the Carr's discussion on the May agenda. And that's started on the June agenda. I wanna have that discussion and to get everybody's input on that. So perhaps we could put that on the June agenda.
Yeah, that's already planned.
Yes, it's already planned. The only reason it's not on here is because Sue was not here. There's a lot of information she wants to share. We wanna keep it herself.
Our tax collector is on a previously scheduled vacation this week. And, and has a full, we actually have already reached out to MMA Legal, gotten their most recent guidance on their full taxing policy. Also, Larry, our city assessor, just gave me, because yes, this is an important issue, but there's also, you know, dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, of parcels owned by the city in either tax-acquired status. Some of the city owns outright. So Larry, last week, in preparation for this piece as well, has, you know, this isn't an individualized issue as well. There's a whole list of all the property owners that could be in this category of tax-acquired lien. There's some are city-owned outright for previous purchases, like a public safety building. What do we wanna do with that? There's some that are in this tax-acquired lien policy. You know, we need to get those properties back from the tax rolls. There's some that are in the prior that, you know, we'd also have as part of that conversation, what that process could be if we wanted to just put that one person back into the mix. And then there's also other areas that could be in the tax-acquired lien, but we don't necessarily wanna be in the tax, put it back in the tax rolls. It could be for another city purpose to discuss holistically. So Sue has been working very hard to do an account of that, but happy to have it on this next cycle. And, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it would have been nice, since I had asked for it and you agreed, that you communicated that with me. That would have been nice to know. No one has told me anything.
And we sent out the agenda when?
So, anyway, I'm not asking it to get added. I'm just saying that, okay, let's have it on June. And let's at least have that discussion.
Okay. I have a note here too, because they...
Yeah, we apologize for that, Steve. We should have been, we had communicated.
I would have thought. I would have been notified since I requested it to be on there. But if, one more time, we're on camera, and one more time, it's gonna happen next month, so let's.
We'd also say, we know we sent out the agenda last week, so if you sent me a note, I could have given you the explanation why, and then we wouldn't have had to.
Well, you could have given it to me upfront when I requested the gender item, and you don't put it on, you could have told me.
You had it Thursday.
Do you have anything else?
No.
No. All right, thank you. Okay, so moving on to unfinished business. 207 Collectibles LLC DBA Ellsworth Candlepin Alley, 25 Eastwood Lane, Suite 6, for a new city Class B license, fixture, liquor, and amusement. So this was on last month's agenda, and I believe the business owner hadn't, wasn't in attendance, so are they in attendance this evening?
Hi. Do you mind just coming to the podium and just stating your name, please?
Ryan Londer.
Thank you.
Is that all I'm needed for up here? Or do you all just stand here?
I think so. Well, we might ask some questions.
I'll stay here.
Could you just explain what the, what the change is with the new license?
Yes, absolutely. So basically, I guess the long story short, I've ran the bar side of the bowling alley for the last two or two and a half years. Recently, the owner of the bowling alley, because again, we operated separately, she had kinda let it go from there, so I took it over. I was also under the misunderstanding that, oh, having the license for the restaurant alone, because they are a combined, you know, entryway of a business, I figured that when I was operating there, it was operating the entire space. I didn't portray, I didn't fill in the city on, hey, I'm, I am the one taking this over. So when they looked into a previous debt from the previous owner, we got a notice, hey, there's a debt. I came in the next day and was like, hey, what's going on? I thought we were good to go here. So we got it cleared up. I then completely spaced the May meeting and, so here we are.
All right.
Or, sorry, the April meeting, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Is your still, bowling is still offered?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, then I move to approve the new business license.
Excellent.
207 Collectibles LLC DBA Ellsworth Candlepin Alley.
And I will second that, for the people in my house who go pretty regularly.
Very good.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
It's a cool spot.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah, yeah. Consent agenda. All items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in normal sequence on the agenda. Number 11, Council Order 052500, request of the deputy city clerk to appoint wardens, ward clerks, and election workers for the June 10th, 2025. Do you have a motion?
I'm sure I moved to approve the appointment of the wardens, ward clerks, and election clerks as described in the memo provided for the June 10th, 2025, City of Ellsworth School Budget Validation Special Municipal Referendum Election.
And there's no discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor? New business. We have lots of businesses here. So number 12, Public Hearing and Action on the Applications for Renewal for the Following Licenses. Shimbashi Inc., DBA Shimbashi, 139 High Street, for renewal of a class, city Class C license, vixxer and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 malt, spiritus, and finest liquor license. Primary Organic Therapy Inc., DBA Cure Leaf Main, 3 Myrick Street, Suite B, for renewal of medical marijuana dispensary license, including a city vixxer license. Brian Langley, DBA Union Rivolast Pot, 8 South Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, vixxer, liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 malt, spiritus, and finest liquor license. Crestwell Investments LLC, DBA Airline Brewing Company, 173 Main Street, for renewal of a Class B license, vixxer, liquor, and amusement, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 2 and 4 malt and finest liquor license. Scott Kenny, DBA Jordan Snack Bar, 200 Down East Highway, for renewal of a class, city Class B license, vixxer, liquor, and amusement, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 liquor license. Geary Ellsworth, DBA Hawthorne Extended Stay by Wyndham, 215 High Street, for renewal of city lodging license. Zepa NY Pizza, 92 Water Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, vixxer, liquor, and renewal of a state liquor license, Class 3 and 4. LJN LLC, DBA Forest Ridge Campground, 40 Flockamoose and Way, for renewal of a city lodging license. Corporate Chefs LLC, 21 Kings and Crossing, for renewal of a city Class C liquor, license, vixxer, and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 liquor license. Melvin Lambert, DBA Charlotte's Pizza, 18 Hancock Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, vixxer, and liquor, and renewal of a state off premise, off premise beer only license. All right, this is public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? No? Going to close public hearing? Everything all set with these? Okay. Which pleasure, counsel?
Now, chair, move to approve all applications as written. A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. 12A. This is the public hearing on budget resolutions for FY 2026. And then we'll do the action after. Okay.
Great.
So if you want to just start off.
Sure, I'll just give a brief overview of, you know, this is all on the website, the ellsworthmain.gov/budget, for those that want to look at the near to final. We still have to pass as a city council, but we've had, counted them up, we've had nine meetings this cycle, close to 23 hours of meeting time. All, all of those hours are on our website and can be linked to at our YouTube channel, if you'd like to be there. There is a few participants and actually a few folks who have come to finance committee meetings and have, I think, been there for pretty much every single one of them. Fortunately or unfortunately, you all have been there for that. That was down by, I think, 18 meetings previously. I think we can do even better next year. I know some counselors have some ideas of how we can streamline that process, make it more transparent, accessible. I think it's a big, a big piece here. Where we're landing around now is net spending increase of 2.9%, which is the CPI inflation rate, which is sort of our initial target coming into the budget cycle. As a team, both with our finance and department heads, but also in discussion with councils. So happy to be there at what I would say is a more reasonable rate of growth than the last few fiscal years. Last, last fiscal year FY 25 was a 7.3% increase in the net municipal budget. The prior year to that, it was a 16.8% increase in the net municipal budget. I know, Steve, you previously had conversations about looking back in your tax bill history and seeing some like flatter growth if you actually took back the longer term. But this is for budgeting purposes, for planning purposes, to have taxpayers see this sort of yo-yo budgeting. We needed that to, to stop. I also, included in my memo online are a few data visualizations that sort of show that from 2009 on through, what the net levy increase was. And you can really see until about the 2020 timeframe, that's when, you know, we see, we see these, a much different pattern. So hopefully, we're back on a track. I know, as during my tenure as city manager, I'll always make that inflationary target, my target. You know, we might not necessarily be able to get there with the council. It's obviously the council's purview on whether we're higher or lower than that each year. But to have a little bit more of a predictable tax rate, I guess there used to be a state law that was repealed, I think, the, right year before I became city manager, that if it was over 3%, it had to go to the voters. So that's not the law necessarily anymore, but that 3% or whatever inflation is, is going to be my, my target going forward. In terms of the breakdowns, again, this is all online with additional data visualizations, but the municipal net appropriation is down about 0.4%. The school appropriation's up about point, or 5.1%. And the county appropriation is up 9.3%. But the total net of those between the three ends up to a 2.9% increase. We're currently estimating a mil rate of around 16.84%, down from a 17.45 mil rate the prior year. That factors in an estimated 5% across the board valuation increase. We're going to come back at the June meeting to discuss a little more with Larry, our assessor, on where he's kind of at in the tax commitment, what new businesses could have come in. You know, we do have to kind of keep up with the state valuation increases so we don't trigger a revaluation. So we have, over the last five years, I think we had a previous discussion, the city of Ellsworth's valuation has increased from around $1 billion to $1.6 billion. So that's an enormous jump. We've been keeping up with valuation increases through then. So 2.9% is the across the board levy increase, but depending on the valuation increase, you know, depending on the new, net new business growth here, that could be a lower figure or higher, depending on where we end up in the valuation and where you end up in the tax, or the property tax areas. In terms of some of the highlights, we are moving forward with the Parks and Recreation Director that was pre-funded in the last budget cycle to lessen the impact of the Parks and Rec Director for this next cycle. So very much looking forward to moving forward with that person and doing a service upgrade for a Parks and Rec area. We also have an additional $50,000 for Norton Park this year, which, so not just funding a Parks and Rec Director, but giving this person some additional funding to upgrade some very heavily used community assets that I know we heard a lot last summer about and really want to do a better, a better job there. Also, the addition of a city janitor. We, this is about around a $22,000 increase because we're actually canceling, likely canceling the contracting that we've been doing for cleaning at Norton Park, the harbor, our city hall, and the police station. And should net about an additional 1,000 hours of additional cleaning services. And also having year-round cleaning. We only, right now, are cleaning Norton Park or taking out the, having assets to that, the bathrooms and other things. So there could be some areas where we can, as these assets are used more long-term, that we don't have a contractor, we can consider keeping them open for longer periods of time, or at least just a better cleaning schedule of all of our assets. Two additional firefighters as well to kind of complete the cycle on the shift upgrades, once we went to a full-time ambulatory care. And also the big shout out to the fire department, they've recently are moving forward and have worked with the state and our Northern Lights partners on being upgraded to advanced life support status. So really, I think Ellsworth probably one of the best in the entire state, if not the best in terms of, you know, if you have a medical issue here, the fire department arriving on staff, able to take you to the hospital, but able to give you absolutely top-notch care, you know, when those incidents do occur. Also adding an additional dispatcher and an additional police officer to the teams as well. From the capital improvement side of things, we're, in the general funds side of things, we're adding a dispatch radio console, the Norton Park splash pad resurfacing, and the police station sign. But that wasn't the only sort of capital thing. We're moving to some of the surplus ban funding, which we'll talk about, I should say ban as the bond anticipation note, where we did the road funding, but it came in under budget. So we decided to sort of use that additional surplus bonding authority to, to add some of the critical capital projects we have, but spread them out over multiple years and just this tax cycle. And then we're going to be having a longer discussion early this summer on the fire department's tanker four replacement and also a school track replacement, where actually I'm having a meeting with the school teams this week to get a little bit more dialed in on what the city's portion of that would be. And we'll be coming back to the council soon on potential bonding for that project. And then there's a whole slew of other, not necessarily huge budget pieces, but important pieces on wayfinding signage, which is in our business attraction plan, a website designed, redesigned to make a little bit more mobile, mobile friendly and ADA accessible, which is also, I think, a federal mandate that's coming up to ensure that we're in compliance with a lot of those features. Citywide VoIP phone system, some expanded workforce professional development and tuition reimbursement programs to encourage longer years of city service and help with some of our turnover rates. And then in terms of what comes next, pending a council vote here, we still have to vote on the school side of the budget, which, you know, they'd vote on June 10th, and then in June, the council would ratify that piece of the budget. And then we're also going to be going into a little bit more of, outside of just the financial planning aspect, kind of the larger strategic policy planning with council on, you know, how our city hall's work plans by departments kind of fold up to the larger strategies of council. So really looking forward to that. And also, on the funding piece, there was a fairly significant amount of debt service drop-off relative to our economic development tax incremental financing district. It's around $400,000 in unallocated TIF funds that are, that are restricted towards economic development activities that we'll need to start discussing more. I think we, talking as a council early in the budget process, that instead of just deciding as part of this process, where to go with these, is to really reimagine or relook at our current economic development TIF districts and then decide, you know, is, are those, they haven't been updated on, I think, in about 10, maybe 15 years. And so are those pieces of economic development that were chosen then still holding true as the areas we want to invest in? Or are there other things? Would we want to invest more in parks and recreation type things? Would we want to reallocate the debt service to other economic development projects or infrastructure projects, as has been done in the past with those economic development TIFs? Do we want to expand our economic development TIFs to maximize those districts? So I'm looking forward to continuing that conversation. So while this budget is a big piece of that, that'll be another, you know, big funding piece for this council to make some decisions on. I think last, last meeting, we moved forward on a TIFT consultant, so that's, that RFP has already been issued, will hopefully be coming next council cycle to choose a consultant and then have a pretty aggressive timeframe for discussing TIF. And then SIP rollout as well. I think we're in much better shape on budgeting. Oh, sorry, the capital improvement plan. You know, we've, this is sort of our one-year plan is in here, but we really need a lot more of an extensive five and 10-year plan, matching it to our, our debt service, to our long-term planning, our comprehensive planning. You know, there's a fair amount of deferred maintenance. You know, I know I've said this before, but I've, you go back into the Tammy days, and you see these excellent capital improvement planning binders that are, you know, still, what I go back to is our best in class, sort of, but that, that information's old. And then from 2020 on, the information is either kind of, seems to be copy and paste from that, and then at some point in time, it's really just not updated. So we need to not only revamp that, what's the five and 10-year process, do a data-driven analysis, have the council really have a lot of deep dive into how we order these big projects that may need to be addressed through bonding, through grants, through general funds. And then also, how do we institutionalize it in the system, kind of the same way we've done this budget cycle on building softwares and, and tracking and using data to really make sure that, you know, that the keeper of the binder, they leave, that the process is institutionalized and, and goes beyond. I'd just say one last piece on that kind of institutionalizing reforms is just a huge shout out to Nate and Ashley and Sarah, Deputy City Manager. I mean, the countless hours we've had, you know, as I've said before, you know, we have this meeting, we had nine in 23 hours, and before this meeting, there was two or three additional meetings, if not more. I think we had a daily at some point in time with our teams prepping for these meetings. And then I was in a training on Microsoft Teams with our deputy IT person, who's also sort of an honorary member of the finance team, because he's so good at Excel formulas and budgeting and everything else. And I saw on his calendar in that training that he had a pre-meeting to the meetings that I had with him. So I don't know, he's there, that, that team's probably at like, you know, 70, 80 hours on this project and are really, you know, have been doing an incredible amount of work behind the scenes to kind of get us to where we are at today. So very proud of this team where we're at with the budget. I think we can, you know, make some process changes that hopefully we can streamline things even further. I know, Steve, you've had some great ideas and Nancy and, and also a big thank you to the council. You spent 23 hours on this from some of the larger pieces, I think on a debt double payment that we had this year, that was kind of two in one, Tammy, that, that you found some excellent stuff on just the need for, you know, a janitor's car and kind of how we can look at those things and tap into even your first year here, jumping right in. John, on the, on the social services piece and, and really kind of digging into that side of things. Patrick, I know with the school has been excellent. And Steve, I know kind of, I love your 2.9% or CPI. Next year, I know, we might not be there. And Nancy, gosh, every, at the end of each of these meetings, you also don't see Nancy, will kind of send me, we'll send out, we send out the change log of the changes that we have made, and Nancy will send an edit to the change log of, which, and I loved it, honestly. And have caught things on like the, you know, things big and small, whether it was the interns. Hey, it's, you know, it's, might not have been as big as some of the other catches here, but was, was, was really, really helpful for this whole team. Everybody's dived right in. So that's, that's this year's budget. Happy to open it up to the, you know, the communities next, Tammy, or if we're asking the council next.
Is everyone okay with me just opening up for the public now? Okay.
Do you want to read for the public's benefit at least what the, or would it take too long, the resolve? Just so you know how it's listed and what the numbers are now?
So it has changed a bit. Because I was talking to Charlie, the schools, that $27 million that's there, that includes the school's net. And so we would need to pull that piece out because we, we're not voting on that tonight because the voters have the option to do that. So the amount would actually end up being, the net would be $11,743,764. Do you want me to just go ahead and read what it was?
If I could interject.
Yeah.
We have always had to vote in the past, this is my fourth time, had to vote for the local appropriation for the school budget, which is what gets it to 27.
Yeah, I think this might be the first time where before the school, we're locked in. I don't know, could be wrong.
We did that last month.
I was going to say, you guys voted on that.
Yeah.
April.
So that it could be sent to the ballot.
But we're still going to pass a budget for 27 million.
Right, right.
Dream up the.
So, and I think I called you each other, it was like, I always remember the vote being in June after the election because this is the, the reason why. So.
Yeah, you know, I'd find a way till, till June, when the, when the budget for the, the school passes, this was, you know.
Or we can vote on the city portion and then ratify the numbers from the school department as well. So it's up to y'all.
If I may, what, what prevent, what harm does it do to get everything in order and vote on it in June?
I think the only thing for me, but I've been waiting on this vote for the municipal side and others, is like, you know, there's a lot of things that we need in July. One starts, there's a lot of prepping and planning. If the council turns around and says, hey, we want to, you know, totally redo things. Now, the council could always do that, but I'm able to, starting tomorrow, go out for the Parks and Rec Director so that they're locked in by July 1, instead of being, you know, August or so. And if it wasn't passed by the council, that's just me kind of reading the tea leaves that I think the council will support this, as opposed to an affirmative vote that this is the budget that they've approved, so.
Is there any reason we can't vote on the total budget?
Is there any reason we can't vote on the total budget? And the vote on the school budget would basically be, you know, then ratified by the vote of the citizens itself. That number's not going to change, correct?
It shouldn't unless it's.
Voted down.
Voted down.
Unless it's voted down. And if it's voted down, we're going to, we'll bigger problems than the language of this vote.
Is that allowable?
I think so. I mean, we get a vote to approve it as, you know, it's been put it to the voters and as long as they approve it, it's in essence a ratification of what we voted for, vice versa. I don't see any reason why we can't do that. You could change the language as of X dollars as to be voted on by the citizens as of June 10. I'd like to vote tonight. I'm not going to be here at the June meeting as well. And I think we're ready to go.
I like the idea of a month head start as well for the staff to decide what can move.
Yep, I agree. You too. Your thoughts?
Well, my thought to, I had a problem with the process before this even got to this subject because I didn't like talking about it at 10 o'clock at night and I wanted people to hear. And sure, I hate pushing things down the road, but it seems to me that if it was in June, we would have our house in order to do it in a much more transparent, easy way. You've all been nice to bring this up at 12A instead of 23 or 26, whatever it was. But there's two problems. One is we got to wait for the union negotiations. And two, now we're, we're hinged on this situation with the school. So, and we've always, since I've been here, we've had to vote for the local appropriations for the school. So obviously, I think everyone's ready to go except me, but that's just my view.
I like, I like the idea that if, you know, if we put some language in there that says local, maybe we can even split it up between local, I mean, the city and the school department just so that it's clear. More clear in their, in the motion.
Yeah.
That's all, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing open. Anybody from the public like to speak on behalf of this item? Public meeting closed. Okay. So then we'll come back to this.
I have one comment that I would like to make.
Okay.
This has been the best process in the four years I've been here. The, prior to Charlie being here and the finance team, we were in the dark and I didn't even know how bad we were in the dark until we started getting real honest-to-goodness numbers. I realize the audit's not done, but just another thank you because I know there's a lot of work that has gone into this. And this is divided out nice and neat and there's been a lot of response to that. And to reiterate what Charlie had said, you know, maybe we don't like that it's down to, that it's a 2.9%, but round numbers, two years ago, there was a 17% jump. That was a rude awakening for people. Last year, it was a 8% jump. That was a more polite. This year, with all of the work that everyone's done, it's down to the 2.9%, which is in line with Consumer Price Index, which is what, everything you look at, you're paying 2.9% more this year over next, according to the Consumer Price Index. None of that would have happened without all that went into getting these numbers. Do I like where they are? Do I like some of the ways that we're spending the money? No. But I'm telling you, I am so thankful for this process and the wonderful work that, every time we ask a question, there's probably five hours worth of work to, behind the scenes that we don't see. And but, and maybe it's six hours, I don't know, but I'm very grateful and thank you. And I, you drove that, Charlie. Don't tell anybody I complimented you, but you drove that. When you got here and then, and then get the finance team together and everybody rocked it. And this is, this is just fabulous.
No, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Steve. And yeah, I know we disagree on a fair amount of things. Sometimes we've been agreeing on a fair amount of things lately.
Don't tell people about it.
But I also will have to settle a bet with Ashley, our Deputy Finance Director. Steve's been kind of quiet for some of these budget meetings and I was expecting some sort of curveball here at the end. And she said, no, I think Steve just likes the process more this year.
I do like the process.
So you're right, Ashley.
We all like the process more this year.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a lot of work, but when we're coming to the meetings, there's, there's substance in the meetings.
We actually had paper in our binder this year. And I also wanted to add, the audit isn't finished by no fault of the city. Just wanted to add that. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, item number 13, Council Order Number 052501, Radification of the Appointment of Twyla Fisher as the Incoming Economic Development Director.
Ah, so excited. I think, Council, you've seen some of these before and we had Sarah bring in, but we are really excited Twyla's going to be starting June 9th. So really, one of the reasons that we went with Twyla and I think hopefully that she went with us is just we just felt like she was right for the city. And she mentioned just kind of the family. Can't wait to welcome her to the Ellsworth family. She just seems like, you know, this is a person that I and the rest of the team are going to be spending, you know, probably more time with than even a lot of like my kids maybe. You know, it's every day, day in and day out, these are difficult jobs and you have to have the right people, especially in a super important position like this. And I just have every confidence. Twyla is going to add an enormous amount of value to the city of Ellsworth. She brings over 20 years of experience in the public and private sectors. Most recently is the Director of Community and Economic Development for the Hill School in Pottstown, Pennsylvania, where she also leads the Hobarts Run Neighborhood District as Executive Director. She has previous work in Department of Community Development for the city of Reading, Pennsylvania. She's a Master in Science from, in cities from the London School of Economics, Master of Arts in Public Administration from the University of Pennsylvania, and a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Columbia. And she just has that right mix of academic experience, but real-world economic development experience. She's handled big thriving community initiatives that we're on track to get here in the city of Ellsworth that could be game-changing, once in a generation, tens of millions of dollars of federal funding in the kind of high street corridor. She also, she has experience in that type of thing, also helping in the Village Partnership Initiative with, along with our Deputy City Manager, to get potentially tens of millions of dollars invested in our main and downtown street corridors. And, and then the other piece I think was really important was, she was the, our top candidate, both in the resume round and the interview round, and she came up twice in person. You could tell that, you know, while being from Pennsylvania is probably going to be a bit of a negative in some people's eyes, being from California like I am is probably much, much worse.
That's true.
But, but you, she's been coming to Maine for a while. You know, she really felt like this is, this is where she wants to be. She, and I think she's already got a home here over off the Surrey Road. I was, we're kind of laughing, like, wait till you arrive and you get to the Bridge Hill. So it's really looking forward to bringing her on and that's pretty much all I have to say.
I would love to make a motion.
Absolutely.
I would move to ratify the appointment of Twyla Fisher as the Economic Development Director as, as an administrative employee reporting to the City Manager and Deputy City Manager in accordance with the city charter and applicable personnel party policies effective immediately.
We have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Yes, sir?
I'm not in favor of the position and I plan to vote against it. I, I don't think, I think we could lower the process of business coming to Ellsworth. I don't think we need to pay an Economic Development Director. I know we've had one in the past. I felt the same way about the Assistant City Manager. I voted against the position, but not the person. But I learned since the Assistant City Manager has been here that she has really, really softened some of the edges and really participated in many departments. And I hope that's the case again. I'm not voting against the person and I got an education by voting against the position. I'm going to vote against the position again. I'm sure you're not surprised. But I don't think Ellsworth needs to spend this kind of money on this position. I think they could lower their fees and attract business quite nicely without this position. I hope that I'm proven wrong and probably will.
I would just like to speak in support of the position and, and the person, having met her briefly. All of the credentials she asked, she has, but the other important part is the, the energy where I think people of the city and people of the surrounding area will be comfortable talking with her. And I do support the position because we have invested in plans and the complaints about plans that sit on shelves, oftentimes it's lack of capacity, that you're relying on volunteers who are exhausted or you have staff that's already overlooked. And I think having one person whose primary job is supporting economic development in the city is going to help us tremendously and more than pay for the position as we go forward. So I'm looking forward to voting in favor of the position and the person as we go forward.
Thank you.
This is not a new position, correct? This is replacing.
Yes.
A person in the same position. It's also, it's how you grow a city. It's how you grow a city intentionally and it's how you, you know, hopefully decrease people's taxes is that there's new intentional development that grows the city and brings in more money. You can do more fun projects without having to pay as an individual quite as much. That's a hope.
Okay. We had a, oh, okay. All those in favor? Oh, opposed. I'm sorry, Steve.
That's quite all right.
She's just going to make you work for it. Item number 14, Council Order Number 052502, Discussion on the Bray Drive Utilities Issue.
Yeah, and this one I'm going to open pretty quickly up to the public. I know we've, maybe I'll just, for those who are coming to this. First off, I think this is our third discussion as a council on this. We kind of discussed the issue in general, first of all, for Bray Drive, for those that maybe listening haven't heard before, it's a, it's a private drive that has had a water leak that they were looking for the city to address, some of the residents there, they don't have a homeowners association. And, you know, there are some serious concerns about how the developer had, you know, had other areas of that around that were accepted as public ways and brought forward and this one wasn't. And we had a long discussion as a council on if it's appropriate for the council to pay for the fixing of a private road, knowing some of the complications. Some, the council sort of brought it back to me to look into some additional history on how that compared to other roads and some of the legal aspects of it. And the PUC, I think, weighed in, the Public Utilities Commission, on really sort of barring the city from using its own water personnel to, to work on these types of private areas of road that wouldn't bar the council necessarily from allocating funds to have other city staff, non-PUC regulated staff, or for us to fix it themselves, or to, to take it as a, a public road without going through the usual channels. The usual channels being which, if a private road and the homeowners on that road would like to make it into a public, a public way, that, and this has happened a few times here in Ellsworth, that they, the city does an, an analysis of how much it costs in detail to, to bring it up to city standards and for the city to take it over as a private, as a public way. And then the city puts an assessment on the homeowners who vote to participate in that program for a period of time to kind of pay back the, the bond that would be sent out to turn it into a, a public way. So the council, at least in the previous discussion, had not been in support of that, that idea, but some of the members of Bray Avenue, who I've had many excellent conversations, I really feel for them. I think most of the council really feels for them in this situation. They weren't able to attend that meeting, so we wanted to offer them an opportunity to speak a little bit more about kind of their side of things. I know they've spoken with you all before, I think at the first meeting, but it's sort of a final run down here to figure out next steps. So I don't know if you want to open it up to the.
Thanks for your time and consideration on the matter. My name is Adam Gibson. I live at 8 Bray Drive and I've been nominated by the residents of Bray Drive to speak on our behalf. And I know the audience is getting a little thin here, but we do have some residents from Bray Drive here. If I can get you guys to just raise your hands. Thanks. So before I begin, I'd like to outline the three main points I intend to make this evening. First, Bray Drive, constructed in 1976 by Mr. Robert Ray of Ray Builders Incorporated, was always intended to be a city road. Second, the city council unjustly denied the adoption of Bray Drive as a city road on at least two occasions based on road standards that shouldn't apply to Bray Drive. And lastly, evidence shows that Ray Builders Incorporated, established in 1964 and still in business today, owns the road and associated utilities of Bray Drive. Our goal for this evening is for one of two things to happen. We sincerely hope that Bray Drive will finally be accepted as a city road by the council. And if not, we expect the council to outline a plan to work with Ray Builders Incorporated, the owner of the, of the road and utilities, to ensure a sustainable path forward for the residents of Bray Drive and the city of Ellsworth. I'd like to begin with a, just a short history before discussing our current situation. Bray Drive's located north of Ellsworth Elementary Middle School and it connects Forest Avenue with Holt Drive. It was constructed in 1976 by Ray Builders, but was initially conceived as part of the subdivisional land owned by Earl and Charles Holt in 1949 and documented by the State of Maine Hancock Registry of Deeds on July 20, 1950. In other words, Bray Drive's been a part of Ellsworth history for, for many decades now. In 1976, 76, Mr. Robert Ray of Ray Builders, he went before the planning board with a proposal for what would become Bray Drive. And in his initial proposal, it was a road with a 33-foot right-of-way, similar to Holt Drive and Argon Street, roads that he had constructed earlier. Mr. Urquhart, a resident of Forest Avenue, spoke out against the idea at that time in an attempt to avoid the problems that came with the narrowness of Holt Drive. Mr. Ray was instructed by the council to prove that he could construct an adequate road on that 33-foot right-of-way. And intending to do just that, he continued with construction of the road and in a good-faith effort, he improved upon the construction of Holt and Argon by increasing the width of the road. Bray Drive has a 20-foot wide paved surface, surface, which is seven feet wider than Holt Drive at only 13 feet and five feet wider than Argon Street at only 15 feet wide. And for comparison, Forest Avenue, which connects Bray, Holt and Argon, it's 24 feet wide paved surface. However, on its western end, from, from Bray leading down to, to Shore Drive, it's also 20 feet wide, the same width as, as Bray Drive. Later in 1976, when Bray Drive was completed, Mr. Ray again went before the council to have the road accepted as the city street, as he was expecting. And it was acknowledged at that time that Bray Drive was grandfathered under the old subdivision ordinance. Nevertheless, the request, the request was denied on the basis of the 33-foot right-of-way and the four-foot ditches would, quote, would not be ample for runoff, unquote. It's our opinion that this initial 1976 rejection of Bray Drive as a city street was unjust and has precipitated this near 50-year conflict where we find ourselves. The residents you see here today are the current victims of this unresolved issue. In 1991, the issue of making Bray Drive a city street was again revisited, but no action was taken, even though it was declared that Bray Drive meets all the standards for acceptance under the 50-foot right-of, right-of-way requirement, a requirement which shouldn't apply to Bray Drive since it was built before the standards were established in 1977. Like Bray Drive, Holt and Argon were built prior to 1977 by Ray Builders. And unlike Bray Drive, Holt and Argon were accepted as city roads, even though those roads are much more narrow and not able to accommodate two-way traffic. It's clear from the public record, Ray Builders constructed each of these streets, Holt, Argon and Bray, with the intention that they would be. Argon, and Bray, with the intention that they would become city streets. In more recent history, during meetings with the city manager and city council, ownership of the road was unclear, the road and utilities was unclear. However, based on documents provided by the city manager's office, it's now clear that Ray Builders is the owner of Bray Drive and the associated utilities. There's at least two examples of this being affirmed by the city council. In nineteen ninety-six, Mr. Stephen Joy at twenty-one Forest Avenue went before the council protesting a proposed seventy-five-hundred-dollar utility hookup fee levied by Ray Builders to the utili, trying to hook up to the utilities on Bray Drive. In Mr. Joy's building permit, it stated there were public water and public sewer supply. And so believing this meant the utilities really were public, he intended to pay a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar hookup fee. However, this was contested by Robert Ray, and it was unanimously determined by the Ellsworth City Council at that time that the utilities on Bray Drive were owned by Robert Ray, thus requiring Mr. Joy to pay the higher fee to Mr. Ray. And more recently, in two thousand nine, Ms. Alicia Card at twenty-two Bray Drive was quoted ten thousand dollars by Ray Builders for connecting to Bray Drive utilities, and instead she obtained a variance from the city to connect to utilities on Holt Drive because she owned the, the adjoining parcel that connected to Holt Drive. So she just ran through, through her own property. So as you can see, the residents of Bray Drive are victims caught in the middle of a dispute between Ray Builders and the city of Ellsworth that's gone on for nearly fifty years now. This brings us to today, whereupon all utility-using residents of Ellsworth are impacted by this ongoing issue because of a leak of unknown size and duration in the water line running along Bray Drive. In the fall of twenty twenty-four, the residents of Bray Drive and Ellsworth Water Department staff became aware of a water line leak in the proximity of sixteen Bray Drive. Residents of Bray Drive approached the city about repairing the leak, as has happened in the past on at least one other occasion, when the city addressed an issue with the sewer utility line on Bray. However, the city now takes the stance it would be illegal to fix the utility, since it's not actually owned by the city. When asked what the city would do in the case of a catastrophic break in the public utility, the city responded at previous meetings, they'd repair the damage, and then pass along those repair bills to the current owner, which was assumed at that time to be the Bray Drive homeowners. However, it's now clear the city would be responsible for recovering the cost from the actual owner of the road and utilities, Ray Builders Incorporated. The Bray Drive residents also approached the city about finally accepting Bray Drive as a city street. And in addition to meeting with the city manager, this is now our second city council meeting on the issue. So we ask you, are you now willing to correct the mistake of your predecessors for nearly fifty years ago, and finally accept Bray Drive as, as a city street as it was always meant to be? And if not, what plan do you have as the administrator of the public utilities for the city of Ellsworth to work with Ray Builders, the owner of the road and utilities, to ensure the adequate transmission of utilities to the residents of Ellsworth? This issue's gone on far too long and taken up far too much of all of our time. So with that in mind, I'll conclude my remarks by imploring you to take action. In nineteen seventy-six, there was a wait-and-see approach, and then again in nineteen ninety-one, no action was taken. And here we are in twenty twenty-five. I, we, think it's time for a solution, a solution that makes sense, brings justice to the residents of Bray Drive, and puts an end to the nearly fifty-year conflict that's now managed to pull in every Ellsworth resident with an interest in safe, reliable public utilities. Thank you. And I have a copy of the statement I'll submit.
Will you go ahead and just scan that and email that to the rest of us, please? Thank you.
You know, oh, is it public comments? So, sure.
I've got something to add to that. There's actually, when the two times came, the second time...
Excuse me, for the record, could you state your name?
Oh, Gordon Workman, city of Ellsworth. The first time when they came, the council told them that they couldn't accept the road because there was enough big, not big enough turnaround for fire trucks or the plow trucks to turn around, come back up the road, that you'd have to make a connecting road to the next road, so they have a place they could go and turn and follow through. So they turned around, he turned around, put that in, then came back to the council again, said, well, I've done it now, I've put the, put the additional road over to the connecting road. They didn't accept that it can. You gotta remember, back then, there was a lot of animosity towards things going on. And I think that was part of that reasoning why they didn't end up, a lot of infighting stuff. I think that's why that road was never accepted. That road was a tendon, tended to be part of that subdivision and owned by the city when he put that in there. So I'm just throwing that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just to be very brief, I really appreciate you speaking to that, and it's Jack Frost, Sixth Bray Drive. Thanks. There is so much history here. I want to thank Adam and Lauren and everybody on our street. We've had meetings, we've had emails. We've lost a lot of sleep over this. I've personally lost a lot of sleep for thirty years as a taxpayer. And if you don't know, you should know what this gentleman just said. There was a tremendous amount of animosity between Mr. Ray, Ray Builders, and the city, and this was a breaking point. And our residents of Bray Drive have paid our taxes faithfully, we've gone to work, we've paid our sewer and water. We haven't been given another option. We've been told we can't put in our own septic system. But I just really encourage you to take the time that we put in to research this after six months, and starting to talk to Charlie, and he's always followed up, which is greatly appreciated because that wasn't always the case, to get us the documents to be able to really see what happened. The unwritten piece to this is the level of tension between the city and Ray Builders at the time, and said enough is enough. And when Bobby walked away from that project, it's true, nobody on our street took the initiative. We had meetings, we talked about it, but there was no consensus on how to move forward. We weren't experts on city planning. Thankfully, we have people like Adam and Lauren and others that have stepped up and really tried to research this project, and I hope you do not just dismiss this, which I know you could do. Please walk down Bray Drive, walk down the other two roads next to us. We were given two other examples in the city to say that these are private roads. One of them is behind the old Denny's, which links to the elderly housing complex. There's one unit there. It's not a residential area in the sense of we have fifteen homeowners. The other example is up by the hospital, which I believe is a dirt road and has maybe one, at the most, two houses on it. We are on quarter-acre lots, for the most part, with fifteen homeowners. And clearly, the other two roads were accepted. Clearly, this road was built at a time when it was up to code. And there was just, I think, enough tension. It's not written in any documents, but this has gone on long enough, and it really should be addressed. And when I'm out, and I know other people on the street, when we're out, and people come up to us just at the transfer station on Saturday morning, and a gentleman came up and he said, is that resolved yet? All of it? Without exception, has been, this should be dealt with. Because it should have been dealt with then, if the residents of Bray at the time, when Bobby decided to walk away, if they had gotten together and really put a plan together, I think it would have been resolved. But this is where we are today. So I really do appreciate you taking time to go through the document that we've provided and give this further consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, this one is, I don't know, probably twenty-three hours into this one, since last fall, and, and the residents of Bray have been very patient and very helpful, and I very much feel this. Kind of from a personal level, I would want the city council to authorize me to spend up to five thousand dollars to fix this leak, and, you know, then I can send the teams out to do it, to just do it, but at a professional level, there's a precedent here, there's, you know, we've talked, kind of, it's difficult, and there's, and I, even that Irving, that private road, you see the shape that's in, because it's a private road. There's a piece of me, too, that wants to be like, we should put that on our next road plan. It's used by tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of people, in ways that it wasn't imagined when they originally accepted these things. But then again, we're in the, we're kind of getting into the fixing private road business, so I, I don't know, that's, I do feel, and I know in the past, it seems like that's kind of what has been done, is, hey, we'll fix it for you, and we won't talk to the council about it, we will just, we'll do it, it's a private road, but we'll just, that's not the way I operate, you know, and, you know, if we want to move forward in fixing this, we have the PUC regulation, we're not supposed to. If it becomes catastrophic, I think that with this piece on the Ray Builders, I could see that we'd have to send the bill to Ray Builders, I'd want to research that a little more, that's kind of currently where I'm at, which is in my authority, is that we'll continue to monitor it, if the leak broadens, that we'd, we'd fix it, if it becomes emergency to the system, and, and then bill either Ray Builders, Inc., or the residents, depending on what the, the research comes back with, pending, you know, or that there'd be, have to be some city council authorization for me to move, that this is a very unique circumstance, and to move forward specifically with Bray, I think would be the other option, so.
Has, have the residents or the city, but probably more likely the residents, have you all been in touch with Ray Builders to let them know, we've done some research, you're the owners? Surprise, what do you think?
No, we have not. We felt it more appropriate to come and, and have this discussion first, to, to try to work with you to come up with a plan to move forward here. We felt that was the most appropriate course of action.
Yeah, I, just to that point, too, a little bit, just to think about what happened in the past, when somebody, once Steve Joy wanted to hook up, and another resident wanted to hook up, they didn't, they didn't call each of us on Bray Drive. They were told to talk to Ray Builders.
So I guess, a question I have, and this is, what changes with, I guess, if we confirm that there is a specific owner, and it goes back to the developer who, I would say, created the issue? How is that different than when it was the collection of homeowners who had shared responsibility? And I don't know if that's a legal question or something.
Yeah, I would imagine from the, from the leak piece, if it's catastrophic, as I said, but then the other side, if, you know, I would, I don't think the city could really get involved in that piece, it would have to be the homeowners to ping this, builders now, to say, just like, somebody that owns your whole building, hey, you own this piece, you need to fix it. That's, but that's, without talking to legal counsel or other, does that answer your question?
It means we don't know, is what I'm hearing. I, I honestly, I don't know how it changes it, and by having that, the, the person who, or the, the business that created the issue, so to speak, is still, I didn't realize it was still in existence.
I think the...
And how, how would that change things?
I don't know, Tammy, if you have any ideas on how you would usually treat these types of things. It's very unique.
It is unique. I don't know. I think it would be good to contact our legal counsel, and I, I'm, is Ray Build, Ray Builders is still?
According to the website.
It is still, okay.
Let me see if Mike has it.
Yeah. I already said it, Mike, sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
She knows. I just really want to clarify what I think would happen here. So if Ray Plumber, if Ray Builders owns it, then, and you want to go to Ray Plumbers about fixing it, that's fine. But unless Ray Builders has a specific warranty on that infrastructure, they're simply gonna say, well, we'll come fix it, but we're gonna charge you, just like anybody else is gonna charge you. So I don't know that we, as the city, could compel Ray Builders to fix that if, unless, like, it's not ours and it's not under warranty anymore. So what legal right does anybody have to tell Ray Builders to go fix it and eat the cost of it?
See, I think it'd be best if we...
Sounds like a legal question.
Legal question, yeah.
So I just, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to point that out.
It's one of the difficult parts here, closest to the work, but oftentimes, like, I've spent a lot of pieces on this, and, you know, like, um, yeah, what, whose responsibility is it to do that piece? But let me, let me do some more legal work on that.
If, I, I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, but it sounded like the road at the time of this nineteen seventy-six council meeting that's highlighted for us at the very bottom, where it was requested that the road, or was required that the road be widened to eighteen feet? And it's now contentious whether or not, at that time, the road was all at least twenty feet, like you were describing? And if there's any way to prove that, I mean, does that, was the requirement before this increased fifty-foot right-of-way, an eighteen-foot pavement and a thirty-three-foot right-of-way, and did the road at that time meet that? Is there any way to figure that out? It sounds like that's the unjust council meeting we're discussing, are those three numbers. Am I, is that correct or no?
I guess part of me is, like, you know, the councils have, and Patrick can weigh in, the councils have done this in the past, whether, like, you know, you can read that and say, I think this is unjust, and we need to move forward, that's, you know, it doesn't really trigger a new availability or powers for me to accept it as a public road now, without the council weighing in new. I don't know, Patrick, if you have any thoughts?
Well, you know, the record, it's helpful to see the history of it, and I'm very sympathetic to the folks on Bray Drive. It's just, to me, I don't see, I still don't see a legal avenue, no pun intended, I'm sorry, to, for the, for, one, for us to do the work, or, and then, two, for us to accept the road. The, you know, right now, if there's a private road owner, it's not a resident, the residents and the private road owner should start talking to see what the private road owner is willing to do, and then we, the city can be part of those conversations. But my opinion, unless someone can convince me otherwise, is we don't have the legal authority. We've been told by the Public Utilities Commission not to touch the water, infrastructure, and the, the road doesn't satisfy our road standards to accept it. It could be widened, and that would have to be figured out between the, the private landowners and the, the owner of the road. And if we can, if we can work out a way to do that, where you can bring the code, the road up to code, I think the city would be happy to work with you.
Yeah, and I'm happy to look at, I've looked at hundreds of these, on what could have been abandoned road, I could be, you know, not hundreds, but many, many months, talking to council before, you know, researching all of these pieces, and, you know, I'll look into this Ray piece, I mean, the, obviously, the original builder is deceased now, there might be some legacy piece where, but to me, I have a very strong idea that we're gonna come back to, like, where we're at now, which is, the council, even though, could authorize funding for this specific purpose, to do something on a private road of this nature, and then I can go ahead and do that, so we can move forward, or that we need to go towards the acceptance of a public way, so that the city holds this in perpetuity, so we can give kind of a one-time exemption, and then when a bigger issue happens, we're owed, the city's again, gonna have to decide, well, what do we do about it now? It's a private way, that, to me, seems to be the, you know, either the, there, there isn't a fun, not a fun, but a, a good legal loophole that sort of triggers us to, like, be forced to have to take this as a public way now, and we just start maintaining it in perpetuity and fixing it as, like, the council's either gonna have to authorize funds because of the uniqueness of the situation for us to fix it outside of the PUC, we can't use our water department staff on it, or, you know, the council, I could be wrong, I have to go into legal, but, you know, can, you know, we could accept it with the, as a public way, and violate a lot of our own rules on why we want to, you know, on what the public way has to be. But there's not, you know, a lot of additional, you know, find a, a solution that triggers the council to not have to authorize new funding, or, or the community members to work towards the way other private ways have been accepted as, as public ways, on bringing it up to city standards and those pieces. I don't think the precedent would hold, Patrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll talk to council on, you know, now we have to accept any private person who's having issue with their private road, that the city council would be forced to do all those.
We'd be obliged, but we'd be asking for, you know, potential onslaught of people like that.
Right, that seems to be the biggest fear of not authorizing, you know, an... That seems to be the biggest fear of not authorizing me, you know, an, an expenditure of funds just to fix it. Um, I think there's a, a strong operational piece on just doing that so we can stop talking about it. Um, but to your point, like, what are we going to say to the next, that's the big, that's really the crux of the issue is what do we say to the next private road association that may be in a similar circumstance? How are we going to say no to them? And, you know, maybe there's not a lot of those out there. And so we're really not opening ourselves up. And there's a new council and they can say, that council last time did that, but that's Steve O'Halloran and that Patrick and that Nancy, but we don't do that anymore. I mean, that would, um, but we could authorize funds to do this.
Do you realize that would mean I have to vote these two?
I'm sorry, Steve.
I'm, I'm over that.
Did you have something, Mr. O'Halloran?
I would love to speak on this subject.
If I could just make a couple additional comments. I, I find the, the precedent, precedent-setting argument extremely weak. I think it's, I think it's very easy to avoid that. Any, any road that's, any private road that's out there that's had this similar 50-year conflict that, that, that is then acts, asking to be a city road? Yeah, I think, I think that is legitimate then. Are there other roads that are out there like Bray? No, I mean, even, even the councilman, the councilwoman admitted that, you know, how unique our situation is. So, uh, thank you.
Counselor O'Halloran?
I'm going to say what people haven't dared to say. And that is, I don't know the conflict that went on, but certainly, um, Mr. Robert Ray had some troubles, um, meeting compliance in many areas. And I think anybody that's lived in Ellsworth the, the last 50 years knows that, um, there was compliance issues with Mr. Ray. Wonderful guy, very skilled. He built a lot of homes and put people in homes that never would have owned homes, not in your case. But he built homes, maybe didn't always have everything correct, but there's a lot of homeowners today that wouldn't have been homeowners in the seventies without Robert Ray Builders. Um, and I'm guessing that there may have been some burning issues from other roads that was accepted, um, that they drew a line in the sand and said, we've had enough. Therefore, um, if you look through all the documents and if you know the history, um, the city did not want to adopt that road. It didn't meet the specifications. I think there were probably other roads that didn't meet specifications that got adopted. And here we are. And my thought is this, I've said this before, this is a unique situation, but if the city of Ellsworth accepted one penny from that line under that road, then the city of Ellsworth ought to be responsible for fixing that line under that road. I am not in favor of adopting the road. Um, that decision was made by a previous council and I don't think we should change that. I hope every owner today knew that that was a private road when they bought the property. And if you didn't, you ought to bring it up with whoever you bought the property from, whether your attorney did the research or what have you, um, it's obvious that it's a private road. However, the city of Ellsworth has taken revenue from those residents through that infrastructure that Mr. Ray has put in there and allowed sewer and water to go through. I think we've spent a lot of time, and I just heard we had legal opinions and all that, I think we've spent a lot of time on this subject. And I don't think it would be beyond the scope. If we're going to accept money and hookup fees for water and sewer, and that is in the main trunk, then I think we ought to get this show over with. If that's not in the main trunk, and that's from the main trunk to your home, you're on your own. The problem comes, I believe, is that no one, and I don't want to point fingers at this, but you've got a problem there. And as a homeowner, no one has come forward and found if the problem is from the home to the trunk or from the trunk. We don't know that. And that could be solved internally with your group. Then what do you do about it? You come to the city. If it's part of the trunk, the city has enjoyed the revenue from the water and sewer for 50 years. And until, I, I don't see why we wouldn't accept responsibility for dollars that we have accepted. When you take somebody's money and you charge them a hookup fee, there is some responsibilities that this city has to these people. I don't want to adopt your road, it didn't meet specs, it was decided that that road was not going to be adopted. But if we're taking your money, we probably ought to stand up and help you because you're paying your bills.
I just want to clarify one point. I think we had this discussion last time. The city's not making money off them. They are paying to have their water and sewer hooked up to them. That's a service. The city pays to have the sewage treated or pays to have the water treated for them to drink it. So I don't, we're not taking money from them, we're providing them a service. The issue is that their street is private and their infrastructure is private until it meets the city line. So unless it's, if it's the city's side, we'll fix it. But if it's not, it's not our obligation and it's not, we're not supposed to do it legally as the PUC has told us. So I just want to point that out. We're not making money off folks on Bray Drive. There, we are providing them a service and they're paying for that service. And just to note, again, I live on a private road. I have to have my septic paid for by having the septic system come out and treat it. And I have to have a well person come drill it, you know, we all, you know, this is just how it works. We just had a $10,000 culvert go out on my road and my, we have to fix it. My private road has to fix it. Again, I feel very bad for the people of Bray Drive, but the city's not taking money from them, we're providing them a service and, but they're in a very unfortunate situation, but no one should be casting dispersions at the city or anything like that for doing other than what our job is.
And Steve, to your, um-
Let me just respond, if I may, I, I'd just like to counter that. I didn't, I'd just like to make the difference here. Taking the residents' money for their water and sewer, I'm not saying anything about profit and making money. I'm saying that we're accepting the revenue from water and sewer. Therefore, there comes some responsibility, um, for the trunk. I don't want to take your road, but it doesn't matter if the city's losing money or making money. You, you're taking the fee, uh, to hook them up and they're paying money. You can call it profit, cost, loss, whatever you want to call it, but we accepted their money.
Steve, it sounded like the hookup fees originally went to Ray and not to the city, or at least in recent memory.
Yeah, I think this one's, it's, you know, it's, you know, if we applied that standard citywide, that would be a very big bill for us to manage the trunk that goes to all of the residents in places that, you know, um, we, you know, it's, that's the, the problem of the trunk here is, you know, is it comes off the city's line and then essentially is in joint ownership of where it's broken off. It's not, you know, it's not the equivalent of if your water faucet leaks and it's there, it's obviously, it's your personal piece, you have to fix it and it's not the city's responsibility going to somebody's home. But in a joint ownership of like the trunk part of this, um, area, it is not the city's part of the trunk. It's the, um, you know, the homeowners or Ray Builders or the private areas. So where it's broken at, like to your point, Patrick, you know, they're, we're paying for, we're taking money for treated water, um, the sewage piece as a catch-up system. And then the equivalent legally from the PUC has a whole ruling on this that we, um, they've said, you know, yep, this, you cannot use your water resources, which are regulated by the PUC, because this is a private part of the trunk. This is not, now that private part of the trunk is owned jointly, either by all the homeowners or Ray Builders, and so it's not as simple as just saying, let's, you know, we'll fix it and send a bill back on this one piece. Um, that's one of the complications. And it seems like such a small thing, it takes so much time here, which to me, it's like, you know, to your point, Steve, if we wanted to move forward and just fix the thing, we could authorize, you know, uh, the city manager to work with the public works director for no more than up to $5,000 in local road accounts to, um, fix this leak as a one-time basis. That, that's a possibility, uh-
So I just want to remind everyone, this is just for discussion only. So if, I mean, if we were going to-
We have to come-
It'd have to be at another council meeting. And I think there's more answers, or more questions that we need answered in order for us to make any sort of decisions, so.
I, I, if I could add to that just a little bit, um, and I'm probably going to have the group mad at me, but I'm just going to say it. If there's a problem and there's a house problem, um, I would think that it would require a homeowner investigation before we know that the problem is the corridor of the dollars coming to the city. Because in standard situations, correct me if I'm wrong, um, if someone goes from the survey road into their home, that's their responsibility. So we don't know where this problem is, number one. Um, and if the problem is in the main part of it, then I think the city needs to step up. But how do we know without digging in? And if we commit city resources to dig in and it's a private issue, then we're, we're in trouble.
And Mike, Mike will validate that too.
Thank you.
Lauren Gibson, at Bray Drive, just, I know it's come up a couple times about where that leak is. There's a new homeowner that just bought her house recently that lives in that house. And so it's my understanding that the real estate agent knew about that leak and did have someone from the city come out and test that water to make sure it wasn't just groundwater, to make sure that it was coming from, um, utility itself, which it is. And it actually is on that main trunk. It is not from the trunk to that person's house. It just happens to be on the corner of her property, but it is on that main trunk. So that was-
And that-
That's my understanding. That was, that was even determined before this homeowner bought her house recently. So I think that has been-
Good info.
Confirmed.
Mike?
And we got to be quick here.
We can't, yeah, we need to move quickly.
Cause it has to be said. So we're now saying that it could be Ray Builders' responsibility, right? Right? That's what we're saying, that Ray Builders owns that, me?
We think we have evidence that says Ray Builders-
Okay. So we can't touch it anyway because it's private and he owns it. So unless you go to Ray Builders and he admits he owns it, like I can't just go fix anybody's line because the city wants me to fix their line. If I don't own that line, I can't go fix it. So if they're saying they don't own it and they're saying Ray Builders owns, owns it, that still puts me in the position of not being able to touch it because Ray Builders may not want us to touch it. Ray Builders might be like, no, now that we know about it, we'll fix ourselves, you're not going to charge me for fixing my leak when I can fix my-
And, and we'll, and we'll come back to this. We, we have that piece. The PUC has already ruled that we're not allowed to fix it pending a separate city council authorization to let non-PUC employees, so non-water employees fix that. I'll go back to the drawing board a bit, um, look into the Ray Builders side of things, if there's anything you have to get done there, put it on the next June meeting as a discussion and potential action and prep the other, in, in my opinion, only, like middle solution, which is authorize a specific amount of funding for the city to build it. Uh, you know, if the council would like to move forward as sort of a, a smaller step. But to your point, Steve, yeah, and we'll discuss much more then on if, once we open it up, it could not be a $5,000 problem, it could be a $50,000. We all have done that, so.
I, I know we have to move on, just really quick. I know we're kind of, we, it, this program, that's just really easy to get into the weeds. So I just want to be really clear, like it's more, it's about more than just this leak. Like we really are asking for your help on how to finally solve this problem. You know, we don't want, we're trying to put in the time so that the homeowners 20 years from now are not asking the next city council what to do about the problems on their road. So we feel like we've come up with some new evidence about perhaps there's a new owner. I think the city would be interested in understanding that relationship too. If there is a catastrophic leak, what kind of situation does that put you in, um, or the other taxpayers? And so we really are just looking for your help on not just this leak, but a way forward. How do we move, how do we move forward on this? Can you ask your legal counsel what that means for us, what that means for you? And just asking for you to keep us, um, updated on what you find out and just coming up with a way to keep in touch and really just move on. It's more than just about this leak. We really want to find a solution to this problem.
I think we're happy to do that, but I think the owners of Bray Drive should be reaching out to Ray Builders to, um, address this issue as well and we can all work together on it. I think we're done with public comment.
I have one public comment here. I grew up on the Bayside Road, 64 years old. One of the first people I knew in my life was Robert Ray. And my father was good friends with Robert Ray. And that was almost a closed community on that road at one time. Everybody took care of everybody. And this is the second meeting I've come to that I've heard his name besmirched. Robert Way was a wonderful man and he provided a whole lot of jobs for the people that lived on the road, his neighbors. He gave people houses that they never would have been able to afford. And he was not by far the only contractor in this town that, as you say, cut corners or whatever, whether, whether that was true or not. But since he's no longer alive, and I am, I just thought I'd come up and make that point. Thanks.
Just one, one thing.
We'll, we'll, we'll be, next, next month, it'll be on the agenda.
But all the revenue that lost water is costing taxpayers money.
I have one comment. If, if this is going to go to the June agenda, for crying out loud, make it discussion and potential-
Action. Yep, that's what I thought.
So that these people aren't dancing in the wind. You know, we got to do something and answer these questions. And I believe that it should be discussion and potential action.
Sure.
So that, um-
We got it.
This doesn't get kicked down the road any further.
Yep. Moving on, council order.
Right, folks to clear out.
Oh, yeah. Do we want to take a little break? Have a little break?
That would be great.
Thank you for coming in, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Different parts and pieces and food and alcohol and dancing. It's it's unique in Ellsworth. There's nothing else that fits our particular uh structure. So we've been through the wringer with code and fire and clerks for the last, you know, eight years. Um, I would so much rather pay a little bit more for every single fee. Knowing that the departments are well-funded and organized and well-staffed. Because the most important thing I've found is to be able to get somebody on the phone, get an email back, have somebody uh do an inspection quickly because a lot of times summer is coming on and you need to be able to like rapid-fire changes. And Ellsworth has been that for the most part over the last number of years. So uh I think funding, funding these at least to break even through fees is totally reasonable and and positive for the business community. I can't imagine too many people will throw a big fuss about a few dozen more dollars. My take.
I'm glad to hear that, John. And the um, you know, we also are moving forward when uh consultant ordinance change to our um based on the comp plan and some of the other things. Just but also it could include some streamlining of processes uh to really. And I don't see that we charge for dancing, but now that I'm hearing you have dancing at your facility.
Expensive dancing.
It's covered up the amusement part.
Like Footloose around here, we gotta. Can't allow this loose dancing around.
So this is a public hearing. I think I'll go ahead and open the public hearing right now. Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion. Can I do that?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Uh move to approve the quest, the request of the deputy city clerk to amend the fee schedule for the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter fourteen, license and permits as presented effective immediately.
Second.
Counsel discussion?
I support this. I think it makes good sense.
Me as well. I like how you put the other towns in here and I think that these are all really reasonable.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor? Post? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Counsel order number zero five twenty-five zero four, public hearing in action on the request of the code enforcement enforcement officer on repealing chapter twenty-six, plumbing and septic system permit fees, amending chapter forty-one electrical installation inspection ordinance, and amending chapter fifty-six, article two, plan approval and permitting procedures to create chapter sixty-seven unified building fee ordinance. Is that Mr. Grant?
We can hear you, yeah. Robert Grant, code enforcement officer, uh coming to you uh live from foggy Sugarloaf Mountains.
Looks foggy.
I'm at the uh, I'm at the annual main building officials and inspectors association meeting. It's uh been really riveting.
We couldn't tell.
Do you all?
Yeah, it's been great.
Do you all look around and notice non-compliant things in the room?
Terrible idea to have that conference.
To just try to keep this brief for everybody tonight, uh I discovered that the fee ordinance, or that the fee schedule for any of the fees for the code office has been at least twenty years since they've been updated. They were also in four different locations spread across three different ordinances. So I decided for simplicity's sake, believe it or not, to put them all into one ordinance, uh sort of a one-stop shop for uh anybody who wants to build, do any plumbing, any electrical work. Uh they're all in one place. Uh assuming US passes now, they'll be all be in one place. And the fees need to be updated. And I I took a couple of different metrics uh to do that. One was I took the inflationary cost uh from two thousand five, which is the last time I knew that I had to have it updated at least that long. So taking, for instance, a seventeen cents a square foot uh residential building permit uh and getting the cost of inflation uh for today's dollars is twenty-eight cents a square foot. So that's why uh I was confident with my math um at twenty-five cents a square foot being even below the cost of inflation, but that's roughly the minimum I need uh to ensure that we're not losing money in the code office. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think, Robert, you also looked at other cities and towns around, so we're not going to be above them, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yes. In I shooting in the packet is a spreadsheet I made uh with my, my, what the fees currently are, uh where the my first proposal uh increase, which would be if you approve it today's increase, uh and then a increase in the future, which I've also written into the ordinance that every five years or so uh the code office is mandated to look at updating uh the fee schedules. Uh they don't have to do it, but it's just that we should do it because it hasn't been done. So I wanted to write it in there that it has to be done. Uh but if you look at that fee schedule, the spreadsheet, it shows that even with my increases proposed, uh the city of Ellsworth would be well below most other uh of the other towns that I selected uh that are similarly sized in what we charge for our fees.
I just want to share an example. So the residential, we're currently charging seventeen cents a square foot. Proposed is up to twenty-five cents per square foot. We have Bar Harbor at forty-one cents, Bath at forty, Brewer at fifty, and Rockland is sixty-dollar application fee plus fifty cents per square foot. So we are significantly lower than any of those bigger, more service center communities.
And Robert, just to confirm that this math, you you think with these fee increases helps code office, you know, break even as far as revenues versus costs?
I did a, I did a lot of math uh that was uh trying to recreate statistics that were never kept in the office. But yes, I believe that that the twenty-five cents for for residential uh single-family permits uh and you know, and on down the list uh gets us to where we'll, we'll be able to break even for a few years. Um we will, the the code office was running at a forty thousand dollar roughly deficit year over year. Uh so that means that every time someone takes a permit up in the code office, the general fund is subsidizing uh forty thousand dollars worth of our operating costs. Or where that shouldn't, we shouldn't need to be able to, we shouldn't need to be doing that. It's.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone from the public like to speak? Seeing none? Public hearing closed.
If my computer still had power, I'd make the motion, but I can't see it, so that's fine. The one comment I want to make, I think, is to just reiterate what what Robert had said about it's not increasing costs, it's that every bit that isn't covered by the person who's getting the service is covered by the taxpayers. And it's appropriate to bring this, and I'm listening to, this will bring us just up to break even. And I like, Robert, that you included that it's required to be updated at a certain amount or a certain time so that we're not going through this, you know, twenty years from now when Steve and I will still be on the council. So. So I I support um when someone makes a motion, I support the the direction we're going with this and especially thank you for recognizing we need to just build it into the system that we're evaluating it so that the um, we've worked so hard on keeping the costs down for property tax owners. I remember there are two gentlemen who come in regularly, I think, to the finance committee. And one of them said, you've got to find other ways to make money. Well, this is an appropriate way to bring more revenues in so that it's not all on the property taxpayers just living their lives in their either businesses or homes. So I look forward to the vote on this.
Basically, the same thing I said for the previous item, so I won't repeat myself, but I'm in favor of it. Robert, do you have, like, in your mind, a, an average example? We like to do uh when we're talking about the budget, we like to say this mill rate, if you have a three hundred thousand dollar house, this is the increase in actual dollars you would pay for this tax? Can you do something? I don't want to put you on the spot with all the math, but if you have in your mind, like, many of the of the permits that come to you are commercial and around this size and they pay this much, with these proposed changes, their increase would be X number of dollars? Do you have a broad brush stroke of that?
I anticipated this question this morning. I I looked up the the average home size in Maine for a new build from two thousand twenty-three. Uh I don't, I'm not in the office, so I can't pull my figures from our office, unfortunately. So I did the next best thing. I Googled uh what the average size of a home in Maine was in two thousand twenty-three. Uh it was sixteen hundred and seventy-five square feet. If we were to have charged a building permit fee for that home, we would have charged a two hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cent building permit fee. Uh if we were to charge the new twenty-five cent proposed fee, it would be uh four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents for a hundred and thirty-four dollar increase. It's not insubstantial, I understand that, but at the same time, I I think between my, my uh evidence with the, what the other towns charge and what we're charging, I think uh we're well below everybody else. As far as commercial goes, I uh I took the cut-up for for planning board business. It's five thousand square feet uh for 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 a building. Uh that would be a thousand dollar uh building permit fee. Uh it was with today's commercial at twenty cents a square foot. Uh and if it goes to thirty cents, it'd be fifteen hundred dollars for the permit.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I like to make a motion?
Please do so.
I move to recodify the building fee schedule contained in chapter fifty-six, article two, chapter twenty-six, plumbing and septic system permit fees and chapter forty-one, electrical installation and inspection ordinance, and do chapter sixty-seven of the Ellsworth City Code to be called the Unified Building Ordinance.
Second. Further counsel discussion? All those in favor? Post?
Thanks, Robert. You can get back to the the mixer.
He's gonna be measuring doorways and staircases.
Peace out, Robert.
All right, item or, item number seventeen, counsel order number zero five two-five zero five, public hearing in action on the request of the fire chief to amend the fee schedule for the City of Ellsworth Code and ordinances, chapter four, fire protection and prevention ordinance.
Good evening. Scott Gilro, fire chief. Yes, I'm, I got the leg on this one. So again, yes, I'm also coming, asking for a, an adjustment on fee schedule. Background history to this is prior to two thousand twenty, the fire department did, the fire and life safety inspector, did have a fee schedule assigned to article two, chapter four. He did plans review for commercial, commercial businesses here in the city, um multi-family dwellings, not one and two families, but multi-families. So we're talking three or more um those style, style occupancies. And there was a fee schedule that was associated. And if you go back and look at the previous ones, there was a pretty significant uh fee schedule that went with that. In two thousand twenty, when the fire inspector retired, uh they removed the fee schedule from the uh code of ordinances. My understanding was is because the incoming inspector at that point in time didn't have the qualifications. And instead of us just not assessing the fees until he met that standard, we removed it. So now I'm coming forward to you. We do have a fire inspector. He's a very good fire inspector. Um he does a lot of plans review. He works hand-in-hand with the planning board uh when it comes to reviewing all the fire and life safety components that it goes to the commercial industries that come into this city. Um and there's a lot of time and effort that goes into that work that he does. Um and uh again, I'm, I'm in a strong opinion that I don't feel that eighty-four hundred people in this city should be paying for the fire inspector to uh do plans review for commercial industry, especially when they're not the ones that are building the building. Um and I have a real strong opinion on that. Um but there is a lot of work that goes into it. Um it's not just a matter of reviewing plans. There's sprinkler, sprinkler plants that he has to review if they don't go to the fire marshal's office. Uh there is alarm systems that he has to review. There's a lot of work that goes into it. He spends a lot of time between planning and code enforcement office, working with them back and forth, working with the developers in in pre-scoping meetings, and all the way along through the process, on top of the inspections that he has to do for business licenses uh for the city, and then the additional inspections that he has to do annually based on the hazard of the building. Um so every commercial building that's in the city has a different hazard class. And depending on what that hazard is, he has a schedule that he's supposed to meet, whether it's every year, every two years, or every three years. And so there's a lot of work that goes into that also. Um and so what I'm asking is that we, we reinstate the fee schedule that was in chapter two. And I provided you a, a, the fee schedule uh with that. When we were going through this process, uh Chief Lowe, who is now with the City of Bangor, Chief Lowe and Thomas were given direction by me to put us right in the middle. Uh and unfortunately, I don't have access to Jeff's files, so I can't pull you that table that he used. But he was given very specific directions to not put us on the bottom end and definitely not to put us on the high end. I wanted us in the middle, in the middle. Fire inspector came before the finance committee here earlier this year, presented it, was asked to make some adjustments. They've been re-presented. Uh and what you have is what was re-presented uh here recently at finance committee. So I am asking your, asking you to approve uh placing those fees back into chapter four.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anybody from the public? Seeing none? Hearing is closed.
Yeah, I guess help, as on the finance committee, they've come a few times and it's been the dialogue and. Yeah, fix some things that we suggested and came back and for the reasons we voted for the other two fee schedule updates, um I think we should vote to approve this one. Well, and bring the ordinance back.
Do you know the average size for, he's looking over for, as the inspector?
Average size.
Commercial building.
So they, uh they, they vary. I mean, we've seen proposals that are coming through that could be upwards of twelve thousand square feet, or we're talking smaller occupancies that are two thousand, two thousand to five thousand. So that is, that is also why the fee schedule is based on square footage uh in part of the calculation.
Well, yeah, you have an example. For two thousand square foot call center, is the calculation, it looks like it would come out to three hundred dollars?
Correct.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the request of the fire chief to amend the fee schedule for the City of Ellsworth Fire Protection and Prevention Ordinance, chapter four fee schedule as presented.
Second. Any further counsel discussion? All those in favor? Post? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you're still up here, aren't you?
Yeah, I am.
Counselor number zero five two-five zero six, requesting the fire chief to sole source purchase an automated chest compression device.
So hopefully this is a little bit easier discussion. It's a little bit easier. So what I'm asking for is uh, is the permission to purchase two CPR devices. They're called Lucas devices. They're automated CPR device. Uh basically, given our short staffing, this actually supplement leaving a firefighter doing CPR on an individual. And it's automated, which means there's little to no interruption uh during the whole time that we're doing CPR with an individual. The funding for this comes through uh Maine State Sustainability Grant, coming through the Maine EMS office. Uh two years ago, I sat on the uh, on the committee that was in charge of doing a financial evaluation for sustainability in Maine EMS. And it was determined that there was a huge disparity as far as reimbursements and funding, and that's why a lot of the EMS systems were failing. So the state has been trying to reinvest back into some of these EMS systems. Um earlier last year, there was a, there was another grant that was out there, but we weren't in a position to be able to apply for that last year. So this one came around, we were able to apply for it, I applied for it. It specifically targeted uh the project for this, what I'm asking for, for the CPR devices. We were awarded a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to pay for these. Um the remaining funds would come out of a revenue account that we have to offset the difference.
Yeah, Scott presented this last week to finance committee and these things sound really cool. And they do an awesome, you know, they have what their, increase their capabilities as best.
We'll let you come down and play with it.
Yeah, exactly. First they'll taze me.
Yes, sir.
That's right, that's right.
So many options.
I nominated him to try.
That's right, that's right.
I went down a video rabbit hole with these. And not only um does it help to alleviate, but it also has a, a better success rate.
It does. You're taking a human out of it.
Yeah.
So the other part of it is, is um it integrates with some software that we already have. So we're able to upload data from that machine at the end of it, at the end of an event so that we can go back and review and see if there are other things that we needed to change or, or so that we're constantly in a state of improvement.
Counselor Hallery?
Do you have to listen to that?
I was gonna say make the motion quick.
I got five guys downstairs.
Code five.
My question is this. I, I'm. You might want to sit down for this one, but I'm in total agreement with this. Uh I think that um what you told us at the finance committee was powerful, that there's not a lot of training that goes to this, that it's pretty automated, um and that you would have it in two different vehicles and that could save uh a lot of grievous for people and a lot of uh time. And I'm all for what's happened here. I'm thankful that the cost to the city is approximately four thousand dollars. The one question I do have is the sole source part.
Yes, sir.
And maybe you could speak to that a little bit to make me a little more comfortable about.
Sure.
Violating the sole source.
No, no, you're, you're a hundred percent. There are other companies out there that do make similar devices. This is not new technology. This has been out for, I want to say, at least two decades. You know, I'm going on three decades, but um it's been out for at least two decades, this type of technology. However, um this is the newest technology that's available and they're the only company that provides this. They're, by design, they're the ones that that created this. But this particular model and this, this version is only allowed to be sold by this company. No other company is allowed to. I can go down a model, an older model, um that doesn't have the integration capabilities that we're looking at. Um and I could buy it from another company, but we wouldn't have that ability to provide that additional information for continuous improvement.
And this, this upgrade, if you will, there's a four thousand dollar value to that?
I, I believe so. I believe so.
So you're looking to take it from the fire department training site revenue? So I believe there used to be a reserve for that, and how much is in that reserve right now?
I wish I knew. I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. Usually it's pretty good. I mean, you get money from MMA, I believe.
We used to, yes.
Okay, so other, other places?
Last time I checked, there's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that was sitting there.
Okay, so I feel like we're.
Yeah.
We have plenty of money in that reserve account in order to cover that. Okay.
Do you think the motion to specify those amounts and where they both come from, Graham? Move to authorize the purchase of two Lucas device, version three-one CPR devices in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars, nine hundred five and fifty-four cents from Stryker Sales LLC, with funding in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred nine dollars and twelve cents coming from the Maine EMS Sustainability Grant NFD. And the remainder, thirty-three hundred ninety-six and forty-two cents coming from the FD training site revenue fifteen dash two-ten dash five-three-zero-one-zero.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Check that man for a paper. We should do that again.
Somebody take his temperature.
Should have had the camera.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Counselor number zero five two-five zero seven, public hearing in action on the request of the city manager to allocate tax increment financing funds for grant consulting services.
Yeah, thank you. Um so this is one thing we discussed a bit during the uh the budget process. But as opposed to waiting until FY twenty-six to move forward on the grants management consultant, um you know, we can use some of the surplus TIF funds that we have uh in addition to some of the things we've already moved forward from last council meeting on the ordinance review, on the capital improvement planning review, on the tax incremental financing uh changes. But this was another big part of the things that just seems like we need to uh start on right away. Um we've, our library uses a grants consultant, part of Ellsworth also uses grants consultant. That's the person who I got kind of a decent range of what this could be to help us really catalog, track grants around from, that we're currently operating under, align it to our business attraction plan, our comprehensive plan, our new capital improvement planning piece so that we can uh try to mitigate the impact of all of those plans and the, and the funding that they might require, require to citizen Ellsworth us. Um uh to, you know, to minimize that as much as possible. There's a ton of grant funding out there that um, that I think we should be taking a much higher use of. So uh really wanted to move forward on that piece, uh whether it's with the consultant that a lot of other organizations use around here, or another consultant, we'll put it out to RFP and then move forward towards an implementation plan. There'll probably be a little more in year one in terms of help, helping us organize an actual kind of grants uh plan. That doesn't mean that all of our grants are just getting outsourced to this person either. It's they're really helping us kind of quarterback how we go after grants that align towards our specific things with somebody who's expert in this. So uh it's one of the things Ashley and I think Mike, you know, we, we, we do a lot of research and we try to go forward on these things and get as much grants as possible. But having somebody that, you know, is doing this for other cities, towns, is seeing something that they can be, hey, this is something that Sanford is doing. And, you know, I think Ellsworth could really utilize this too. It's part of your comp plan. It's a part of your, this plan, to really have somebody focused that's an expert in grants. Uh that could be a good use of funds for the city, especially with the tax incremental financing funds. So that's it.
Questions?
Yep.
Okay. Um so I wanted to get clarity about what exactly we expect this fifteen thousand dollars to cover? If it's the searching for grants and, and the writing of the grants, then for the city to submit those? Or if it's actually the grant management part of it?
We're still gonna have to do the compliance through our finance office and those other pieces. And also even the grant writing, this person will help us kind of ga- gather them. But they're gonna be doing an inventory of all the grants that are currently out there, creating um spreadsheets and a system for us to um kind of take track of where we're at now. And then also, as new grants come up, have a dedicated process. Basically have a, like, a dedicated grants um management process that's currently absent right now. Each department sort of, especially since I've arrived here, um has been doing it. It was on um my list to, to do, but it's been on Sarah's list to do. Um but we are all, you know, none of us have the, the bandwidth and honestly, the expertise outside of this to how do we create a unified grants management process throughout the city, um and then bake it into our system. So it's still gonna be a lot of collaboration with the um, uh, with all the other department heads. But it's really gonna be, okay, what grants do you have out there? Here's those pieces. What, um, and, and yeah, have, making sure that they're hitting their deadlines, that they're. Um and then also, here's what the state legislature just passed, and some of the grants I think you should be chasing. Here's some private industry grants, and I think they could be matching to this. Or, and vice versa, too, when we have the SIP plan come out, hey, here's our new SIP plan. What types of these pieces? Is it with USDA? Is it with this organization? Um that, you know, somebody who's kind of taking a little bit more of a balcony view of what we're doing so that when our teams are just, you know, are flat-out time-wise, that there's at least somebody kind of continuing to push the ball on new things that we might not be seeing that'd be really valuable because, you know, our day jobs are obviously very, very busy, so.
I just wanted to declare, okay, I was talking to the, one of the grant consultants and they were saying that the management part was really an internal job. And so that was not expected from this position?
Correct.
Okay, great, perfect.
So Charlie, you just feel like this is like a one-time type of thing to kind of?
One time at this level and then probably like a maintenance level as well. Because, yeah, having somebody who's just an expert in grants working with other cities and towns, I think, yeah, from a, from a long term, and if it's working well, great.
I think, yeah, from a, from a long term, and if it's working well, great, because we're, you know, that, that's that person's expertise. I could also see at a future level, if, as the finance teams, you know, actually Ashley and I were talking about that recently, I'm just, if we were to add somebody else in finance, if this workload would become bigger and we're managing tons and tons of grants, we're gonna have to staff up internally, because this, or we're gonna have to have a consultant help us out at a much higher level than $15,000 a year. This is really just help us get our grants consolidation, management, what we should be on there at this kind of level now and then, you know, probably less of a fee for the next year if it's working well, to bring us new grants, to, you know, be triggering us on when we should be, you know, making sure the filing is in there, that kind of thing.
I feel like we were talking, and I'm not sure if it was in the finance committee meeting or, I can't remember, but how many grants are we overseeing right now?
I don't know off, off the top of my head.
You said something like 70 something, but.
I don't remember saying that.
I don't, you know, it is late.
Grant manager might help with that.
Yeah.
I'm sure this will appear in your manager's reports, but it'd be great to, a number of months after this starts, to just get an update, some council meeting. Here's all the grants we're looking at now, this person helped to bring in.
Yep, you had one from the chief here today. I just was talking to the police about another one and it's just like, okay, we need to consolidate all of those. And yeah, and here's, here's where they're at, here's they're moving forward, so it's not just so siloed. We can see how they're all, and then what are the missing pieces here too? And that, and the SIP planning too, that's gonna be a big piece of this. What of these can we try to chase grants for? But that's, yeah, either an internal, almost full-time job or something we need a consultant to kind of help us get over the line.
I'm, I'm definitely for this. I want to reduce the tax burden on our residents from property taxes and definitely get more grants. I know I've pushed for grants myself and gotten them and it's a lot of work, especially as a volunteer position. So I'm definitely for this and I'm looking forward to getting the feedback and hearing if this is working or if we kind of feel like this might want to be a permanent position, full-time grants manager position here in the city.
Yeah. Yeah, it's one of the triggers for me is like, we really want to, we really want, but then smaller organizations too and smaller cities and towns, yeah, they're contracting out for this.
Did I have the public hearing?
Does that do you come here?
Yes. I don't think I had, yeah. I'm gonna open the public hearing. This is in public, hearing none, hearing closed. Let's switch to the council.
This council would like to ask a question.
Oh, sure.
Scott, how did you find out about the grant that you just told us about that you received $35,000?
That came, that came as a direct notification from Manny MS, part of our bulletin they sent out to all, all the license agencies.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have another, one more comment on grants. I actually had a constituent reach out to me and point out that we either missed or we didn't get a community action grant that was from the state through the Community Resilience Partnership, and they were giving out the largest amount of money ever. I'm not sure if we applied for it or did we get one? We had one already?
Yes.
Sarah Devlin, Deputy City Manager, we have one for the match to the VPI.
Oh, okay.
So I, that's what we.
On a previous year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we weren't.
Yeah, we haven't spent down that money yet. It will be spent down by October. She'll be very happy to hear that. Thank you.
I know, looking through like the last budget that got passed by the state, and I read the municipal's kind of their, MMA's little, I don't know if it's quarterly or monthly, their magazine article on this, and I was just like, there are like 12 things that could kind of be there. You know, how do we, how do we tie them in into already, you know, and what don't we, don't we know about?
Applying for grants is a significant part of my job. It has been for 15 years. I support this, this role, this contractor role for that coordination and raising awareness. I think to Steve's question about how do you find out about it, some are direct notifications. Today I went through two emails that were from Senator King's office with, here are federal funding opportunities, and they've got them by department. And there's, I'm gonna say 100 in each email. And so if you've got someone who is already familiar with what might be offered and then recognizes the title of it to be able to go for it, that's generally federal. There's the main philanthropy center which puts out notifications for funding for what there might be. And then again, Grow Smart, a lot of our community work is funded through the Community Resilience Partnership, through the Housing Opportunity Program. There's a rhythm to those and they're incredibly powerful for what they can do for communities. So at both the philanthropic, the state level and the federal level, there are opportunities and you just need the capacity of somebody who's in the rhythm and knows how to do it. The other value this person can bring, we've only hired someone to help with a, a grant once and it was for a federal grant with USDA, which we did get. And we applied for that because there's a checklist and if you don't dot every I, you're just out. And so having someone with that experience of what's required and who can track it for you, it still comes down to the staff to be able to tell the stories. I never found value, like if I have to tell the grant writer the story on, on what we would do and why it matters, I can do that myself. But there are those pieces of getting it set up, getting the right information, knowing where to apply, even have somebody who can, who can arrange a meeting with the main community foundation for staff to be able to talk about what there might be. There are people who live in that space and can add incredible value and will more than pay for themselves with this $15,000. And again, they're not doing all of the work, but they're, they're giving the framework and, and from there, the, the city folks can do their role in telling the stories that will be compelling to get, to get the money and you're not gonna miss it because you forgot Form C 5380 or you had an updated version and didn't know it, and that can happen. So I fully support this.
Is there also the opportunity to recoup these costs when applying for these grants or not for this position?
Generally not, no.
Well, I move to authorize the city manager to issue a request for proposals for a grants management consultant with a total cost not to exceed $15,000 to be funded from the FY 2025 surplus in the Economic Development Tax Increment Financing or TIF account.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Get your picture, get your picture. Come on, people, people. We'll wait till.
Smile at him.
We'll just wait for the budget vote when it will be unanimous again. We'll get the picture, so.
All right.
Okay.
Where are we? I've lost my.
Twenty.
We are officially punchy.
Counselor number 052508, public hearing in action on the request of the finance director to amend counsel order number 112400 to reallocate bond proceeds to additional projects.
Let's look together.
Okay.
Nate Moore, Finance Director, I brought Sarah to, because she's so great and I figured she could discuss about the reallocation.
Good evening. Sarah Devlin, Deputy City Manager. This really came up during our SIP discussion at the workshop on April 8th. In planning for that, staff recognized some surplus in the ban from the local roads portion. So we thought that we would propose to reallocate some of that to some of the CIP items that we discussed at that meeting. So just to refresh everybody's memory, we have the excavator and trench box that's split with the highway department wastewater and water. Highway department's 60%, the other two departments would be 20%. We have the camera that's a three-way split between the highway wastewater and water. We did add the snowplow, the sidewalk snowplow into the mix based on the discussion that we heard, and then we had the two vertical balers. That was part of the CIP discussion on April 8th. In addition, after that meeting, we also received some information from Woodard and Curran based on the Surrey Road water main. That was already in the ban for FY '25, but in their proposal, that happened, so that ban happened, I think, in November. And since then, there's been some, some additional information and additional details in the cost proposal. So the contingency is requested to be increased by another $107,000. That's already in the current ban. So those are the items that we would be proposing to reallocate the local road portion surplus, which is $486,000, reallocate those to those items, and they're all laid out. I can go over the cost of each of them if you wish. And Nate can talk about anything about like the logistics of reallocating that with the bond, counsel.
Yeah, I just note that's, we've kind of discussed this at length at the council meeting on the capital planning. This was a big discussion, just for those who might be looking in here and saying, you know, what's, what about each of these items? We had a pretty, you know, obviously there's a memo here, but there was also a video of pretty extensive discussion on the excavator and how much tonnage, I think it was, which was.
And it's 19.7.
19.7.
Ton.
And the trench box and the way it's needed for, you know, the, the real safety of our crews. A fair amount of folks sadly lost their lives without using the appropriate trench boxes and these pieces, but we don't have an, the appropriate trench box. Or if we got one without an excavator that could carry it, put it on our types of trucks that could carry it and move it to our facilities. And we were at a double water main break a couple of weeks ago and you just see how unstable this, you know, the soil is around things without those trench boxes or having the right tool at the right time and the equipment in-house, so we don't have to go rent an excavator to try to bring that equipment to there. This is a safety need as well.
Yeah, just Public Works was out working on the water connection, water sewer connection for the courthouse road and they had all their equipment out there. So they had the rented excavator, so they would be, that's an example of what this one would be used for, along with the track possibly.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Discussion, action.
Just like to go on record is saying that I didn't realize the city of Ellsworth didn't have an excavator to work with. And I'm disappointed that we have made other purchases when an excavator for the city of Ellsworth is probably a very important tool to have. And I'm disappointed that we didn't, that maybe I should have known that, but I've seen many other expenses for the highway department that I was in disagreement with. But a city of Ellsworth, an excavator is a main tool to work with. I'll be the first to, to agree to that. The, the challenge that I have with that is this. I don't think we should be taking $486,000 away from our suffering roads and buying these pieces of equipment with it. I think it was intended to pave roads and I think that's what it should be done with that money. I think that if we have $486,000 left over, that we should be carrying that to future roads, not funding this list of items that I believe is necessary. And I can't believe as city of Ellsworth didn't have an excavator or a 40,000 pound one to do those type of work. But I, I don't think it's fair that we reallocate the money from paving that we borrowed the money for and decide to change speeds with it. I think it should go into our roads that have been suffering greatly. Big improvements this year. We put money into roads this year, but I think that spending the money on other toys, and I, I say that loosely with no disrespect, because I believe we need an excavator, but I don't think it should be coming out of pavement for the roads that everyone in this city could enjoy. I think this should have come up long before this. And furthermore, I, I'm unclear, it says useful life 20 years. What is the length of this bond? Because I, I'll be damned if I want to see us finance an excavator for 20 years.
We don't have the bond yet. This is.
Right. Yeah, so we'll take an average useful life out of all the things in this bond to put forward. We're not, you know, that's what they previously done in the past. I think we had the previous debt schedule discussion. You can see the bonds, some of them are for 10, some of them for 20, some of them for 30. So those will be our ranges and we'll, before we convert the ban to the bond, we'll have a much more broad discussion about all the pieces that are included and what we feel like, I think there's two levels to this. One is not just the individual item that's being bonded for, but then how that feathers into our debt service, which is another important piece. We don't want to be having spikes or drops in the debt service necessarily. We want to make sure that it's a reasonable amount of debt service to, to carry for the city. I think we had a discussion at the last budget meeting with where that debt service is at. We're falling off in a couple of years by about, I think, $300,000 on those pieces, but, and this is, to your point, Steve, on the roads side of things. Like we, we did the roads that we thought were in most need. We thought they'd be in the range of like 2.1, 2.2. I think there was a few other things in that ban that were, were.
Yeah, there, there was a snowplow that was under. Yeah, because, and to that point also, this is in large part because the bid came under, under. That's where the savings was. We didn't, not do the roads that we put in that, in that ban.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
But let's take advantage of, of carrying that and put it into our roads. And this useful life business, I disagree with this excavator, this trench box, this camera. 10 years on a camera technology is gonna surpass that in no time, that camera. 20 years for a trench box, 20 years for an excavator. The maximum you should be financing that is seven years. There's, there's no business financing an excavator for 20 years. Seven years should be the max.
I believe there is an asset policy that does determine useful lives for accounting for these as well as depreciation. I think we kind of stick with that. And Steve, I agree with you as well. I think, I know, believe it or not, right? I do feel like this money should have been used for roads and I think I mentioned that in a budget meeting as well, that I would like to have seen this money used for roads.
So I support all of these things, but again, that's just my.
And roads is gonna be part of the, we got way more than 400.
No, we, no, no.
$486,000 left in roads to be done and kind of the process here too, which is these are the kind of immediate critical needs. Now that we're gonna, you know, we did 1.6 million in roads this spring, almost out of 20 projects, just four, we kind of ma, and plus the High Street, we've kind of maxed out on the year one. You also don't want to do all of your road, you know, that, you know, we haven't done this kind of investment in them in four or five years. So to put it, all that to make up for it in one would have been, you know, we're gonna be laying an Easter egg for somebody to, you know, to open up 10 years from now. So we do need to stagger these and the kind of plan now, we've talked about this before too, is once these roads get paved with High Street and all of our roads by the early fall, is to have a new road analysis inventory done via data, not just via the roads committee, kind of talking about what they think is the worst in the, in the highway committee, but to actually have a car with LiDAR go over every single stitch of road we have in Ellsworth and then produce a report that we can take a data-driven approach to the next 10 years of roads rebuilding. So that, you know, that initial 1.6 million was kind of where it's at. We're not gonna have that data until this current roadwork gets done and we do that analysis. And then if, in this, as we said last fall, last, the fall is gonna be and the winter is gonna be kind of pencils up so that we can be shovels in in the spring. And so that's kind of the next bite at the apple here. I, I don't see this as necessarily taking away from the roads. We wouldn't, you know, if you wanted to allocate roads funding, you know, over the summer, I wouldn't know until I have that analysis done. This is to lessen the impact of what are things that could be put in the general fund this year, but an additional 449,000 in this year's general fund would have been, you know, we'd been well, well over 2.9% on pieces that I feel like, you know, are capital assets that could be bonded from, in more than just a year one side of things, so.
So the balers are for transportation, are for solid waste. The sidewalk plow is road adjacent walkability. It's not, you know, infrastructure. But it seems to me every time we get into roads, there's water main issues. there's water main issues, there's camera need for storm drainage, for monitoring water lines, storm lines. And then there's unforeseen costs, just like the Surrey Road increase that we're incurred and found, which seems like it, you know, increases the need then for the excavator and the trench box. We're getting into the roads, there's additional costs, we're replacing water lines, we use this equipment. I see most of this is tied to roads, even though it's not asphalt, aside from the balers and maybe the sidewalk plow. But it, it fits for me, most of this stuff with ties to roads in my mind.
Yeah, and the camera is going to be as part of the, the new vac truck, which we also, um, have moved on. That should be, I don't know, Mike, when it's going to be arriving, but that's part of that.
Supposed to be your last room.
Field trip? Back truck cruise?
Motion?
Motion.
Now, do I need to read the whole council order?
No, I believe it's just, I think it's just the title.
There's a suggested, but we had to add in those amounts.
Okay, so I move to order, the order amending the current general obligation bond to include additional projects and the increase in the original Surrey Road contingency as defined in the original order. Amendment includes the following summary of projects and bond amount during the, do I have to read this whole thing?
Maybe just the project description.
Project description. Escavator, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Trench box, fourteen thousand, four hundred. Camera, forty-two thousand dollars. Sidewalk plow, hundred thousand dollars. Vertical balers, two, thirty-two thousand dollars. And Surrey Road Water Main, one hundred and seven thousand dollars for a total of four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Wow, Steve's voting, everybody's, Steve's voting. This is, this is great council meeting, I like it.
Whatever's in that bottle, we need to just go. Counsel, are we down to number twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
We are.
Yes, council order number zero-five-two-five-zero-nine requested the city manager to accept the bid for engineering services relative to the courthouse road project.
Absolutely, and this, the next three are kind of me, and they're all in sort of a similar, uh, project to give folks a little more background. I know the council is, um, this is, a lot of this is relative towards a lot of briefings and workshops and presentations we had in the Surrey, um, Road to Merrill Lane Courthouse relocation effort, um, for the public. There's a whole website called ellsworthmain.gov/courthouse, which has all the videos of those workshops, um, and which in large part culminated in a January meeting, um, to authorize the city manager to move forward on this project and work with the state, uh, for the purchases of, uh, of road easement and fee purchases, the, um, and working with the state on the environmental permitting, uh, looking at funding mechanisms and, uh, and piece, and then which, uh, ended up becoming a courthouse collaboration agreement, which we entered into a few months ago, which outlined kind of the steps of this process that we'd be going through. This is, um, the next step. I know, um, uh, well, I'll, I'll get to that when we do the, the road, the road discussion one, but one of the pieces of the courthouse collaboration agreement was that we RFP, uh, the engineering and the surveying services, um, to start moving quickly on that by a certain deadline, uh, which is, um, so we have done that. Uh, on the engineering side of things, we received one proposal, uh, from Andrew McCullough Engineering, uh, the city has worked with many, many times in the past, and, uh, was a good proposal, um, in line, especially with, as we talked previously around, uh, we'll have to wait until Andrew provides, uh, if approved, the actual road design for the road to do kind of final estimation costs, but, um, to be done totally privately around one point five million. Um, we're hoping to do that less with the mix of our public works teams on specific parts of the process. But, uh, the engineering side of that, that ninety-six thousand, six fifty is well in line with other types of projects that are of this, this size. It's actually in our procurement policy where we don't have to go out to bid for, um, engineering services, but we really wanted to do diligence, um, and kind of obviously meet the courthouse collaboration agreement. So, uh, the recommendation is to move forward with the, um, with the contract, and that's it.
Does the public mean?
No.
Well, I will move to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Andrew McCullough Engineering for an amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the provision of design and engineering services for the Merrill Lane Public Roadway Project.
Second. Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
I'd like to go on record and, uh, just make the statement that, you know, I'm against this project. I don't think we should be designing and building roads when we haven't taken care of the roads we've got, but that's already passed. And this is about, um, the engineering. And it's nice to see that we have an Ellsworth company designing an Ellsworth road. And I'm very thankful, um, to see that. Uh, I plan to vote against it because I'm against the project. I don't think we should be building, um, more roads. I think we ought to take care of what we have. But thank you, um, and I, I think it's nice to see us hire somebody that is within the city, that has, uh, um, a good experience and, um, a, a good working, um, relationship and a taxpayer.
All those in favor? Oh, yes. Opposed? Opposed?
Take out the camera. Is it abstain maybe?
Wish I could, but I can't. All right. Council order number zero-five-two-five-one-one, public hearing, a potential action on the purchase of fee easement rights to portions of Adams and Merrill properties off High Street to the extension and incorporation of Merrill Lane as a public way.
You skipped one, I think.
Yeah. Yes, twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Council order zero-five-two-five-one-zero requests the city manager accept the bid for surveying services relative to the courthouse road project. Sorry about that.
No worries. Um, we're getting there. Uh, this one's, um, you know, uh, there, there were two bids on the, uh, on the, on this one. Um, Steve, I think you'll be happy, we're again going with a local, uh, person. Their bid on the, um, was a little bit less than the alternative bidder. Um, also, they have a, a little bit more local knowledge here as well. They also had some alternative, if we have to do some additional things that could put them almost at the exact same level, or maybe like slightly like a thousand dollars more than the other bidder, but due to the local knowledge, um, you know, the, the likelihood that it, it'll likely be less. But this is to, once, um, the design of the, of the road is kind of in place, then we'll obviously have our, have to survey it, mark it out, um, go through things, so, uh, important to have this piece in place as well. While they were pretty close, I recommend going with Harrigan Salisbury, um, for fourteen thousand, one eighty, uh, with additional optional services up to seven thousand, fifty-five, uh, if needed for the surveying pieces, so.
This is not a public hearing, so.
Motion to approve the selection of Harrigan Salisbury Inc. for surveying services in the Merrill Lane roadway project in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, one hundred eighty with optional services authorized at staff discretion up to an additional seven thousand, fifty-five dollars.
Do I listen? Okay. Discussion? Yes, sir?
Same situation, ditto. Glad to see we're using a local company. Um, I'm against the project, I'm going to vote against this, uh, but I'm glad to see that we have another Ellsworth company that is going to benefit from this.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, now the next one. Council order number zero-five-two-five-one-one, public hearing, potential action on the purchase of fee easement rights to portions of the Adams and Merrill properties of High Street for the extension and incorporation of Merrill Lane as a public way.
Yeah, and this is, um, this is again part of the courthouse collaboration agreement. We have a variety of timelines and deadlines to finish our piece, which, uh, one of which is to secure the, um, uh, the fee purchase of, uh, of parcels of land connecting to the, the Wardwell property, uh, where the proposed courthouse will be. Um, and I should also note that I get asked a lot of times, like, when can we take the signs down? The, the state is, uh, you know, consecutively working on a, a project to, um, this Friday, meet with Augusta, in Augusta with the, um, with the Wardwells to close on the seventeen point nine acres, which will officially swap the Surrey Road property, uh, to, uh, for the, the Wardwell property off of, um, off of High Street. It's like, I would say that time is the, is the real, um, you know, that's, uh, when the signs could definitely come down. Um, the, uh, but part of the piece of this is we need to enter into contracts with the, the landowners on this piece. I would say we're, we're fortunate, and this is part of the collaboration agreement, the discussion is, you know, we've really kind of minimized the total footprint here, have tried to narrow the road as much as possible. We've straightened it out, working with the landowners as much as possible. We also are not building the construction road, um, which was going to come in off of Long Lane, so there'll be a savings on that piece. Uh, but this, uh, this kind of final configuration here, uh, is, is what's going to give us the, um, you know, the kind of final piece of our part of the deal with the, the state to secure our, our land purchases. It is, and I've said this, I think, in December, maybe even November first, which was, the estimation was around two hundred thousand, uh, for the land purchases based on our city assesses, um, assessed value of the land. Um, that's where, uh, thanks to working with these great landowners, that's where we're coming in at today. These, this kind of map here that I showed you, you know, it's, it's roughly, it's roughly in the, uh, range of about a hundred and seventy thousand, um, for the parcel directly off Ha- High Street, the Merrill parcel, um, around, uh, around thirty, uh, sorry, a hundred and seventy-five thousand for that first parcel, um, and then the Adams parcel, which kind of is that more rectangular piece, uh, around thirty thousand for, um, the purchase of that parcel. And then the Wardwells, who are swapping the seventeen point nine they have for the Surrey seventeen point nine, that's a deal with, just with the Wardwells in the state. Uh, but they'd also be, uh, deeding over, uh, a small land parcel there that connects to the courthouse, um, to the city, so that the city in perpetuity would have that as a public way going forward. So we're coming in, um, around budget and the, all the landowners, you know, in the initial discussions when we had this, on if this is feasible and if this is something they'd be willing to do, everybody's kept their sides of the bargain so far. So very happy to be, um, working with these great teams and great landowners that just really have the best interest of Ellsworth moving forward. Also, a nice new note, we finished the environmental surveying of this area, and you can see those two big circles around those potential vernal pools that could have, um, really limited development of this area. Uh, have just been, um, come back as not being vernal pools. So, um, the only kind of non-developable parts of those areas are like the wetlands. There's a wetland impact fee people can pay if, even if they want to develop there, but that leaves a lot more acreage around this courthouse road development to, um, increase the value of those areas surrounding the road, um, for housing, I, I would hope, but other developments that we're really, um, upvalue these pieces. And I know as part of our TIF planning, you know, this is a big piece for me on, you know, I think we should be tiffing this area, um, to potentially shelter the, the increase, uh, for additional economic development purposes. And, you know, I think will be a big discussion there. Um, and plus just the increased value of, um, you know, taking places that are really, um, in woods growth right now to making them, you know, attached to our High Street corridor, uh, for, in much higher value pieces. We, you know, at the chamber dinner last week, you just see there's, you know, the home to sweets, the twenty million dollar project, just a throw, stone's throw away from these parcels on the other side of the railroad tracks, a fourteen million dollar, you know, um, middle income housing development, um, just across the Card Brook area, uh, you know, a twenty-five million dollar, a hundred and fifty unit, uh, development as well. So there's a lot of demand for this type of thing in this area and, and less and less, um, places that are right off the road. I know Nancy, we've talked about smart growth, a lot of the sprawl we're seeing on the other parts of the road that are not in our public water or public sewer. I won't belabor this because I went into detail on it, on how this relates to the comp plan and other things, but, um, so, uh, moving forward at, um, to enter into these contracts, which we will likely be doing this week, um, and then, uh, giving the state what they need on Friday to move forward on, um, on their closing with the Wardwells, and then we'd be closing, um, our pieces of land deals later on. I could come back for council ratification, um, of those contracts, so. Uh, and this would be coming through our local roads, um, capital account, which there's sufficient, um, levels at the FY twenty-twenty-five budget level to, to fund this, so. That's, um, that's the background.
Public hearing open. Public hearing closed.
I'm very excited for this project, um, but I do want to, kind of looking at you, Sarah, um, uh, make sure that we understand that we are taking away area that, um, was previously forested and taking a lot of that rainwater there. We have serious, uh, stormwater issues on High Street, so that Thriving Communities grant is going to be really important on how we address our stormwater issues that are only going to get worse when building up this area. Uh, I don't think that means we shouldn't be building there, but we have to be, um, coming up with solutions on High Street and that area and how we're going to mitigate that stormwater, so. That's all I really want to say there.
Um, future builds are part of that grant, so we are taking into consideration what build out looks like there, so it is considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we're gonna, you know, Andrew's gonna give us that it's those initial designs. I think some initial conversations with him have been that, you know, we can keep that stormwater, um, pretty well on this. It's, you know, it's a sixty-six foot right of way, but we're only, you know, to stay under that, I think it's a five acre threshold of impermeable, both with the road and the courthouse as one project to move quickly with the DEP. Um, it's not going to be, um, sixty-six feet necessarily of road. So when we have final engineering designs and other things, and I've, um, you know, sidewalks and walkability and potential, you know, we'll have a fair amount of land here, we could have one side betrayal or a median with trees in the, you know, but those are, um, you know, we'll get an initial design, the stormwater plan, we, we've stubbed the system, um, while they're doing this in High Street, it was actually kind of the perfect time because there'd be a big penalty to pay if we had to try to connect our stormwater and other pieces, and we didn't do it, you know, we tried to do it after they finished High Street. So, um, you know, we've, uh, we did it at the right time, so this is kind of ready to go to.
I'll just say that, um, how I, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, Charlie, but also the management team, and, um, very excited for this opportunity for Ellsworth, and I just appreciate the staff, city staff's efforts on this. I know you guys have been working really hard on it. So, I'd like to make a motion, um, to move to authorize the city manager to enter into contract agreements for the acquisition of fee interest rights and land for the production of a public way and the extension of Merrill Lane as part of the courthouse collaboration agreement at a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifteen thousand, with funds to be taken from the local roads capital account. The city manager is further authorized to enter into easement granting agreements with the Wardwell Adams and Merrill families, the Maine State Judiciary for access rights, roadway improvements, and utility tie-ins related to the public way.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, now we're going into executive session.
Move, do you need a motion?
Yes.
I move, uh, to enter into executive session to discuss labor negotiations between the city of Ellsworth and the Ellsworth City Hall Clerks Unit Massachusetts in Northern New England Laborers District Council three-two-seven in accordance with MRS Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section Four oh five, Paragraph Six, Subparagraph D.
Second. All those in favor?
Mike, you get the door for us?
Gotcha.
No, and we need to probably give it back to them as well for shredding.
Yeah, we have to do it in executive session.
Right.
All three?
I, yeah.
I don't think we need to.
Oh, we don't give it back?
Yeah, just stop that one. Need a vote.
Okay. Item number 25, Discussion and Action on Labor Negotiations Between the City of Ellsworth and Ellsworth City Hall Clerks' Unit, Massachusetts and Northern New England Laborers District, Council 327.
I move, we vote to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ellsworth and the Ellsworth City Hall Clerks' Unit, Local 327 of the Laborers International Union of North America, July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028.
Second.
Discussion? I want to go, I don't want to, I need to go on the record, expressing concern about the intent to shift to a four-day work week. I think that City Hall is a public-facing, public-serving entity, and I am concerned that four 10-hour days will not provide the same amount of service, the same availability of service, as even what we have now of one late evening and then the half-day on Friday. So I'm extremely concerned about what that would be, and I see that it's, you know, in here, subject to the city's right to alter the schedule. So I think I'll be interested in feedback on how it works when we go into that, but I'm, having just learned about it, I'm very concerned about what that does for the level of service we can provide the people of Ellsworth and the people who come into Ellsworth and expect services.
I think we can, you know, have further discussions about this, and I believe it came to council before for approval, so.
But you said that was several years ago?
You've been here, what, a year, Charlie?
Yeah. It was before I was in here during the.
September, maybe of '23, something like that.
Yep, so we'll, I'm trying to think, before it's voted on, am I allowed to talk about?
I was going to say that, am I allowed to say that out loud? But I won't anyways, I have, so there it is.
Yeah, I've kept the negotiations piece, and Steve has too, pretty, so I don't know, Tammy, if I should just.
I've just, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, just go ahead and just, and then.
And then if it's ratified, then I can talk about it further, but yeah.
Exactly. Okay. All those in favor? Passes. All right, item number 26.
This is in the budget, so I'll talk about it as part of the budget.
So this is just the action on the budget resolutions for FY 2026.
Great, well, I talked at length about this on 12A tonight, so I will not belabor a recitation of the memo and all the things at the 2.9% inflationary area. I will say it does include both the police union negotiation increases and now post-ratification of the clerks' union negotiations. It also includes the pay adjustments done by, negotiated by Councilor O'Halloran, myself, our attorney, the clerks' union, and the, our, oh, our city clerk, Sue, who's not here with us today, she had previously scheduled vacation, but I, as part of the discussion, the negotiation, we discussed with the clerks, I believe, prior to coming here, they switched to a schedule of Monday through Wednesday of 8:00 to 5:00, and then Wednesday, 8:00 to 6:30, and then.
Thursday was 8:00 to 6:30.
Sorry, sorry, my new Wednesday, 8:00 to 5:00, Thursday, 8:00 to 6:30, Friday, 8:00 to 12:30.
Case in point, it's confusing.
Yeah, so, so with the intention, at least at the time, that this would be kind of a halfway measure towards, going towards a four-day municipal work week, with which many, many other cities and towns have done. I know a lot of staff have requested that, of kind of what's the status update on that, where would we be going? So as Councilor O'Halloran and I discussed with the, with the union, you know, if they were to switch to a four-day municipal work week, what would their sort of schedule preferences be? They were very adamant that they'd like to be at the, still at the 40 hours a week, and, you know, it was in this area that the preference would be for the clerks to be at a 7:00 to 6:00 p.m., 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday. I hope I'm not speaking for you, Councilor O'Halloran, but Councilor O'Halloran and I were both in agreement that that's a more, at still 40 hours and a more predictable schedule than what we're currently under, and, you know, still give citizens the ability at 7:00 in the morning through the 9-hour, every Monday through Thursday, to arrive here and do city business, and then also after-hours for working parents and others, and that's, however, this, its management rights is the, the scheduled hours, and there are other, you know, lots of other pieces of our organization have a structured schedule that's not Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. In fact, everybody in City Hall is not on a 9 to 5 schedule currently, so, so we, there is a piece that we need to discuss with other staffers, other managers, on if the City Hall hours were to go towards this structure, how that would affect, and if we should do that and have a further conversation with council on that. I think there's some pros in terms of the cost savings for having City Hall, you know, not have to be cleaned, and cost of energy, and heating the building on Fridays. There's some cons on not having, being able to have a wedding here on Fridays for, you know, the very busy Friday before Memorial Day with boat registrations. I think that on the flip side of that, we've heard from a lot of staff, on the current schedule, we have a lot of people that are showing up on, you know, on Friday afternoons already, and having that kind of not great for the customer. I think the Monday, Wednesday schedule, a Thursday schedule, and a Friday schedule is not hitting that mark very well. A fair amount of other municipalities are, have gone to this four-day week, and so I kind of can't use it as a recruitment mechanism on selling our five-day staggered schedule. Going to four days could help in that, that aspect, but is Friday the best day? Is Monday the best day to keep towards the, still keeping this 40 hours, but.
So you're going to be bringing that kind of back to us after review and discussion?
So bring it to review, have a lot more socialization with, with staff, and then discuss, you know, how and when we might switch to that kind of schedule. And then, back to the rest of the 20, so that's the very smaller portion of the, the larger budget piece, and, yeah, the 12A, I've kind of discussed at length on the, on the other pieces, and I'll leave it open to council questions before we put forward the resolutions.
Just to clarify, there's two resolutions?
Oh, yeah, I do believe that there is. There is, yep, there's two.
What's the one for the enterprise accounts?
Correct.
The chair entertainer motion?
I would have one.
Okay. I move that adopt the following budget for the fiscal year 2026. Motion that be hereby resolved at the sum of $27,155,150, which constitutes the estimated requirements of the various city accounts for the fiscal year 2026, based upon the budget submitted by the city manager as provided by the city charter, be raised assessments upon the inhabitants of the City of Ellsworth and upon the estates of non-resident proprietors with the city for the present municipal year, and that the sums hereby appropriated in addition to sums as otherwise provided, the amounts for each proposed being specified as follows. And then I would add a friendly amendment that, subject to ratification of the municipal budget in June 2025.
School.
Sorry. What did I say?
School.
School, subject to the school, or the school budget, I can't remember what I said now, voted upon by the residents in June 2025, if you can figure that garble out. Should we take the second resolution? This is second, yeah.
Oh, no, you can just.
Okay, and further, it is resolved that the City of Ellsworth City Council approves the budget for the following departments in this amount specified, and, I'm not going to read all those, but we have them in front of us.
As, as referenced.
As referenced, as thoroughly reviewed. The total wastewater expenditures being $2,662,700, and the total water expenditures being $1,737,644. I think that's all the relevant numbers.
Do we have a second?
A second?
Do we have further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Do we have a motion to adjourn? I can't even speak.
So much.
Second.
All those in favor?
Well done.